This meeting is being recorded.
Good morning. This is the council's fifth work session in which we will review the county executive's proposed general plan, Hoco by Design. The proceeding this morning is a hybrid meeting, which is being held in person and via WebEx teleconference. It's also available to the public via live stream on the county council website. The council will conduct a series of work sessions and public hearings to review and obtain public comment on the proposed Hoco by Design. Today's session covers Chapter 7, Quality by Design, and Appendix C, Focus Areas. The council will host a second public hearing on next Wednesday, July 19th at 7:00 PM, and an additional one in September. A complete calendar of council meetings regarding the general plan can be found on the council's website. This time, I'm going to do a roll call of members. Vice Chair Young?
Here.
Mr. Youngman?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Ms. Walsh? Great. Everybody is here. So we'll now proceed with our agenda. We'll do Quality by Design, Chapter 7, from 9:30 till 11:40, and then begin Appendix Areas after that. So we'll start with the presentation and shift to council member questions after.
Good morning, council members. I'm happy to be here this morning. I am Linda Eisenberg, the new director as of three weeks for the Department of Planning and Zoning, and I'm thrilled to be here today. As Chair Rigby has mentioned, today our focus is on Quality by Design, Chapter 7 of Hoco by Design. This is an exciting chapter that provides guidance on how we can respect and prioritize community character in future and in existing development. We are going to define character that has many elements within the built and natural environment, which our team, to my right, will momentarily discuss. And it's now my pleasure to mention who from our team has joined us here today. From our DPC, we have Mary Kendall, Jessica Bala, Kate Ballinger, Sarah Latimer, and Kristin O'Connor, which I believe are virtual, virtual behind us. And then we also have our consultant, Matt Newcaster from CEI, who will be with us this morning as well. We're also joined by some of our subject matter experts, including Beth Burgess from DPC's Resource Conservation, Anthony Catalotto from our Development Division, Land Development Division, and Jeff Goins from our Zoning Division. And also, we have Jason Janati from the Howard County Economic Development Authority, who will be joining us as well. The EDA was key partner in developing the vision for the Gateway, detailed in the focused area appendix that we'll be discussing after the Quality by Design chapter. So we have about a 45 to 55-minute presentation, and then we'll break for additional discussion. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mary Kendall for our presentation this morning. Thank you, Mary.
Yes. Thank you so much, Director Eisenberg. And it's good morning to all members of the council. It's great to be here with you again today for our fifth work session. So in this particular chapter, Quality by Design, there are a total of five topics, and we're going to be highlighting some of the key policies and actions found within each of these topics. So there are also, there are many concepts that were presented in the focused areas Technical Appendix, and we have actually woven some of those concepts into our presentation to help visualize possibilities for future development that has a character-based approach. So that's all woven into our 55, you know, 45, 55-minute presentation, so then we can just open it up for all the questions together. And more specifically, these particular illustrative concepts that are in the focused areas Technical Appendix do just focus on Newtown and Columbia, Gateway, and the rural crossroads. Please keep in mind, though, when we show you these illustrative concepts, they are meant to be hypothetical, right? They're meant to just depict possible approaches to redevelopment and infill, again, following a character-based approach. These particular concepts that are presented from the focused areas appendix will help inform implementation, will help inform things like our regulations updates, the Gateway Master Plan, and new design guidelines or character-based codes that may come out of the general plan update. Just a quick reminder, what is the general plan? It is meant to be high-level visionary and long-term. And remember, it just is, its intent is to offer guidance for future implementation once we get this plan adopted. And it gives direction to multiple agencies about various topics, and helps them form a variety of initiatives and efforts, as you see on this diagram here. In addition to updating our zoning regulations and our subdivision of land development regulations that come out of a general plan, specifically this particular chapter, Quality by Design, can help inform other implementing documents, such as historic district guidelines, design manuals, complete street policies, and our landscape manual. All right. So now getting in a little bit more into the chapter itself, this is a summary of what we heard throughout the planning process from all of our community members and stakeholders who participated. Overall, we heard that the community, of course, appreciated the varied character found throughout the county. No two places are identical. There was also a great deal of interest in seeing some kind of design compatibility for small-scale infill development. We heard interest or concerns about wanting to see more green design throughout the community. Also, we also heard a lot about universal design, the importance of ensuring that all of our public spaces, our public realm, is accessible and universally designed for everyone, that they're walkable, and people want to see diverse commercial, entertainment, and cultural offerings here. And of course, there was emphasis, as we heard a lot, about historic preservation, and how our historic communities are a key contributor to our sense of place here in the county. This slide just shows a few quotes that we heard from the county that basically just emphasizes a lot of what I just summarized. But you can read more about these quotes and what we heard in our engagement summary, which is available on our website. All right. So this chapter, Quality by Design, it does have a spotlight on Newtown, because we heard a lot about Newtown throughout the process, understandably. And as everyone here knows, Newtown is a carefully planned community that was developed by Jim Rouse. And in the chapter, we highlight what his vision was for Columbia, which was a socially responsible, environmentally friendly, and financially successful place where people of all ages, incomes, and backgrounds could grow as individuals, neighbors, and citizens. We also point out that Newtown zoning, it was based on a set of principles, such that everyone should have access to an extensive open space system. The local economy should be based on a healthy mix of commercial and even some industrial uses. And there should be a variety of housing types all mixed together, and that villages are clustered around neighborhood-serving village centers. And this plan is not proposing to change these principles, but we are providing guidance on how we can follow these principles while creating opportunities for future investment while prioritizing character. So as a part of our scope with the general plan, not only did we want to emphasize a character-based approach, which is what this plan is all about, we wanted to try to define character a little bit more clearly in the Columbia Newtown zoning area. So throughout the planning process, we held what we called these Newtown Design Sessions, and there were three of them, and they occurred in 2021 during COVID. And in these sessions, we convened a good number of members from the community, in which we discussed general design principles and aspects of community character that the community found important to Columbia. And based on that feedback, we then produced drawings to help the community envision what future development and redevelopment could look like. And many of those drawings are found in the focused areas appendix. And we are going to see some of those concepts in our presentation today. So before we dive into some of those five topics that I mentioned earlier in the Quality by Design chapter, we thought it would be helpful to talk a little bit about what do we mean by character. So I would like to invite Matt Newcaster.
Yes.
There you are.
Can you hear me?
Thank you, Matt.
Yes.
Yep. So Matt's going to talk a little bit about what do we mean by character. Thanks, Matt.
Partnered with the community and stakeholders and the like, it quickly came to the surface that character was going to be a very important component of the plan, and really a defining element of the plan and the way we organize the plan. And so this new idea about character, when we're talking about it, we're saying that the natural landscape has a purpose, it has a look and a feel as you experience it, as well as in the built environment, you have things like the buildings and the spaces between them, the transportation system, your stormwater management system. All of these things can be designed in a way that creates a sense of place, a unique brand and an identity for the community as you go forward. And the reason it really rose to the top for this plan, maybe even compared to previous general plans for Howard County, was that we realized and recognized this idea that you're more into an infill or redevelopment mindset if and when you want to accommodate future growth. The amount of land that was available, if you remember from previous council work sessions, about 2% or so that wasn't, that was vacant and unprotected, is going to be precious. There's going to be a lot of competition for that space. And when you have development being considered in a place, it's now going to be about adaptability and compatibility with the surrounding environments. We really want to make sure that character had a strong influence, was a defining factor as we move forward with the plan. So in terms of the defining elements of character, I started to name some of those in the previous slide, but you have big systems, things like natural drainage systems or the transportation network. And as you can see, and you look at the historical development of the county, you start near rivers, and then the railroad has its influence, and then the road system has its influence, and the development pattern changes as you go through those different transportation evolutions that you had as a county. Again, the landscape, as you go from east to west, it's a very, very different place, and a lot of great experiences all within one county. And again, the natural environment, the agricultural environment, how development is planned, and how you interact with that development all creates the character. And again, what's really important to these is how they all come together. And I remember way back from some of our meetings we had with our steering committee, and we would talk about how you could have certain uses, like a restaurant, for an example. And I could have the same menu in four different instances, but while it's the same menu, the look and the feel of the environment as you're coming into the building, as you're approaching the building, as you're leaving the building can be completely different based on its character and where it's located within the county. And so we really wanted to recognize that as we went through this planning process. And then obviously, I don't need to tell you what you already know, but as we were able to, as a consultant team, explore the county and partner with the community, we were able to see a lot of great places to be proud of within Howard County. You already have this spectrum of places that really just kind of keep the senses going as you travel around. And whether it's in the rural west, and you look at some kind of agriculture, or just the rural feel and character of the roadways out there, you have your three historic communities, Elkridge, Eloquent City, and Savage, that create just a unique experience as well. You have a tremendous number of established neighborhoods, some of them decades old, and some of them, the best known with Columbia, have national cachet, obviously. And then some of the employment centers, or some of the emerging activity centers that are being talked about now as they are, and what they may become in the future, all create this character. So it's a kit of parts, and we were very deliberate not to create a one-size-fits-all approach when we talked about character for Howard County. And as we started to put pen to paper and organize what we saw in the physical landscape into a framework and a mapping environment and approach that we could use to help define the plan, you can see we have this idea here. I think there's, I forgot the count, but there's lots of different character areas that were created. So the reason might be why? Why so many? Well, obviously, we wanted to try to capture existing conditions as they are today, but we also wanted to capture some of the aspirational things that were being talked about during our planning process. And we need to create order in order to do that. And because one of our goals of the new general plan was greater predictability, it required additional character area districts or a typology in order to capture everything that we were talking about. And then we apply those character areas. And for those of you who've been with me in the planning process, you know I've described sort of the slide previous as the ingredients and the map as the recipe. And we worked very hard on this map. And again, it went through the scenario planning process, it went through an engagement process where we had review and comment. And I feel really good that, again, there's greater precision that is here, as well as there is more predictability as we go through here. I would like to also just sort of mention, as you look at how we've kind of organized this, and this is both this slide as well as the previous slide, we did have what we called our PSET mindset, which was to preserve, enhance, strengthen, and transform. And as you went from left to right on the previous slide, we became less change to more change, and less intensity to more intensity. And so in some ways, it may be more like we are maybe for just a general terminology, we're playing more defense on the left, and we're playing more offense on the right, trying to think about what the general plan needs to influence, and specifically in your comprehensive rezoning, and in your development applications and the like, kind of what is our mindset as we go through this. And that's kind of how we've set up the plan, so that as soon as you get to it, you have some predictability, or at least some comfort on kind of what the level of change is that's being considered for that area moving forward. And then obviously, we want to look at kind of how we move forward. So again, character becoming a defining element is easy to say. The devil's in the details on how you do it, and how strongly you do it. And so that's kind of what we talk about and try to set up a little bit within this planning process. You'll notice there's much more detail in terms of the purpose, the, some of the targets and things as we describe what a place might be like. And that's to try to make things a little bit easier in the comprehensive rezoning when you pick it up, and you start to think about what design characteristics you want to emphasize. Obviously, the design manuals that you have right now have been very effective in their own right so far. There'll be additional reliance on those with the zoning ordinance in order to get what you want in terms of defining character. But again, we just wanted to make sure we talked a little bit about why, like why is character used so often in this general plan. But I'm going to count on others now to talk about it in more depth and how you're going to implement some of these things. So I believe Jess is next.
New space, new room. So as Matt discussed, you know, we have this existing established communities, we have our growth strategy, and Hoco by Design really aims to ensure that we have a predictable development outcome. And how we are going to do that is, we're going to make sure our development standards articulate that when development happens, we want it to utilize best practices and placemaking and urban design principles. We want to preserve and incorporate natural features. And we want to ensure those development standards establish transitions between the built and natural realms. To achieve this, we have to consider a variety of implementing tools and strategies, I'm on the next page, sorry. Sorry, such as character-based code elements, pattern books, design guidelines, and manuals. We have a lot of this in our existing regulatory framework, which we'll have to review and update in response to the general plan. But we want to make sure that we have all the tools that we need to help guide the look and feel of our communities instead of exclusively regulating use to fulfill the vision and policies laid out in the general plan. So the character-based code elements that I just referenced, if you're not living in the planning world, you might not know what that means. So what these do is they emphasize context. They ensure that development is appropriately scaled to the surrounding land uses and the public realm. They can do things like regulate the building heights, the placement, the parking, the street, the sidewalk, and the open space in significantly more detail than a traditional zoning code could achieve on its own. And how these code elements can be applied is really going to be specific to the area that we're working in, and what we're trying to achieve within that area. These kinds of codes are really most successful in well-established character or well-defined, or well-established character areas, or those areas where we have a really defined vision for what we're trying to achieve, and where form is the priority for how we want the development to move forward, particularly when we have a mix of uses that are desirable in that area. Form-based codes on their own can be challenging to create and implement, and they're not necessarily the best tool that we have in every situation. So luckily, we are not reinventing the wheel. There are a variety of examples of communities that have created hybrid codes that take form-based elements and traditional zoning elements and combine them together to ensure that we have a fully robust and complex character-based code element that can help us guide development. And as a complement to the character-based code elements that I just described, there are, those additional tools are things like pattern books, design guidelines, and manuals. And these provide standards for building design, landscape, and build elements that contribute to people's experience of place. The content of these kinds of tools, again, they're going to vary. They're going to vary based on the different character areas, because one size is not going to fit all areas. And we have different goals for those different character areas. We, in Howard County, we currently have several existing manuals, and the Design Advisory Panel provides advice on new developments that are subject to those DAP review areas. So the plan calls for considering those manuals as they exist today, as well as the role of DAP moving forward. Next slide. So. And so our first set of policies and actions in the Quality by Design chapter really looks at acknowledging that there is a great variety of different communities across the county, and that following adoption of the plan, when we start our zoning and could update, there's going to be identification of the areas that are best suited for these character-based zoning concepts, where pattern books, design guidelines, and manuals, or a combination thereof, are most appropriate. And we're also going to look at evaluating our existing historic district zones, determine if an overlay or a form-based code may be more appropriate to achieve what we want to achieve in those areas. And as I said before, looking at what the Design Advisory Panel's role is in reviewing areas and the guidelines that they apply. And finally, my personal favorite, sorry, a little biased from my past work experience, is the Newtown zoning district, and where we're going to be looking at what the needs are to determine if the current regulatory framework is appropriate, if it's achieving our desired results, now that we are sort of built out and we're operating on a different model than was originally conceived for that area. So moving on. So talked a lot about the character of areas, and we'd be remiss if we didn't discuss the number one thing that people experience, which is the public realm. Like, this is the spaces that people exist in, that they move through. They are the unifying force that contributes to cohesion of place, and often is a major influence on the character of areas, especially in mature communities where landscaping has really come up as one of the major character elements. The public realm consists of our transportation networks, our recreation areas, our usable open space areas, and other external public spaces that exist between the private buildings. As I said, these are the areas that people live in. And it's typically, most people don't want to move from building to building and have an awful experience as they're doing so. They want to have an experience that contributes to their well-being. And we want those spaces to be intentional. We want them to be walkable, accessible, inclusive, comfortable, and appealing to everyone. And it doesn't need to be a top-down approach. There needs to be an engagement with the community, say, what are your needs, and what is the existing fabric of your community that we can best enhance. So going on the next slide, as we said, we're not going to reinvent the wheel, and there are great examples that we can pull from. And the city of Boston developed a really good diagram that shows examples of the public realm elements, things like sidewalks, bicycle facilities, outdoor seating, public art, small parks. And these all make the public realm more inviting. Particularly, I want to focus on the right-hand side of the screen, the blue area, where you see a lot of the interaction between private uses and the public realm, and how they support each other economically, and in creating inviting sense of place. I want to remind everyone, not three years ago, when all of a sudden, we're in COVID, we're not supposed to be going in buildings, and our public space and our realms became incredibly important to supporting the economic vitality of our businesses, and also providing us safe places to exist in. And that is why you have to continually reinvest in our public realm and ensure that's meeting all the needs. So the degree that these elements are included in our design guidance, and the form that they will take is going to depend on the context of the area and what we're trying to achieve there. So on our next slide. As Matt alluded to, we have this PSET framework. So for most of our character areas that are in the preserve, enhance, and strengthen areas, we're going to be making tweaks to the public realm. And then the transform areas, we have an opportunity to make sure that these are really inviting spaces, and that they're achieving everything that we want to achieve. You know, those preserve areas, we might not be tweaking the buildings as much, but for the transformation areas, we're going to be looking at the orientation of buildings to the street, and as the primary public realm, how we're going to create pedestrian-friendly streetscape, how we're going to include public art in those spaces, which really creates a sense of self. No one, space, we don't want all of our areas to look exactly the same. We want you to be in a space and know exactly where you are. And we want to provide a range of meaningful community spaces. Everyone loves open space, but more than anything, they want to exist and be able to use it. So we're going to be focusing on the universal user experience, and make sure that access to those open spaces is designed to accommodate the needs of all community members. And these are the, some of these select policies and actions in the chapter that's going to help us achieve this. We don't have to start from scratch. We have existing design manuals that contain many of the elements that could be applied more broadly across the character areas throughout the county. And we can also start building some unique applications to match the local character of the area. This is going to be a holistic approach to making sure that we're incorporating things like our complete street policies into the transportation infrastructure. That does a lot already to achieve a lot of the benefits that we're trying to in the public realm areas. And as I said before, this is not a top-down approach. We have to work with our communities and our stakeholders to ensure that the open space areas reflect their needs and their sense of self, and that the public art that's located in them reflects their character, their history, and their values. Part of the plan's focus on equity is ensuring that these open spaces and usable public realm areas are highly visible, that they become community focal points, and that they provide social and aesthetic benefits to that community. And part of the contributing elements of the public realm, although they can be categorized overall, there's going to be different open space patterns that are appropriate for different areas. And we're going to have to carefully consider that as we get into implementation, and actually start taking the high-level goals of the general plan and applying it to the ground. So, which gets us into a lot of the focus area appendix concepts that we looked at. If you remember, on the next slide, the map from prior presentations, we have six categories of activity centers in the plan, and these are really our areas that we're targeting growth and we're seeking major transformation. They vary in size and scale, and they are going to have, and they're targeted for a mix of uses. They're clustered around a couple of locations along Route 40 corridor, certain areas of Columbia nodes within the Route 1 corridor, and the Route 100 corridor. Going back to Hoco by Design's focus on being more predictable, more achievable, what we're doing is refining the growth strategies planned Howard 2030, and we're creating diverse targeted activity centers that are more specific than we got into in the last general plan. So when we talk about the variety of scales that we're trying to achieve, we'll start with Gateway, which is our largest regional activity centers, shown in green here. Not only is it the most amount of acreage, but it's also where we're going to see the most amount of growth targeted. We have our transit activity centers, the darker blue along the Route 1 corridor. These are going to have smaller footprints than Gateway, and they're going to be compact mixed-use developments within walking distance of transit. And then throughout the activity center locations, we have smaller-scale activity centers with very small footprints compared to Gateway. These are village activity centers, industrial mixed-use activity centers, and the mixed-use activity centers. Moving on to Gateway, which our focus area appendix meant sometimes providing guidance and showing illustrative concepts to convey the vision for that activity center. As we all know, a picture is worth a thousand words, and it helps to convey the different scales and contexts of that activity center. The Gateway Focus Area Appendix offers very early ideas. These will have to be further explored and refined in the forthcoming master plan, which has an overall intent to redevelop Gateway as a major hub for employment, entertainment, and innovation. The general plan also emphasizes that Gateway is going to be a place for housing options, open spaces, transportation access, public services, mobility, and environmental stewardship. So as I said, Gateway is really going to be our most significant investment as an activity center. It's over 1,000 acres, and the development horizon for Gateway is anticipated to extend past the horizon for Hoco by Design, which is one of the reasons that we're engaging in a separate master planning process for it. We want to see it be built as a truly complete community, and that that master plan is going to be a comprehensive document that addresses multiple elements, from innovation to land use and public facilities. If you dig in for some light reading in our focus area appendix, we have 11 considerations for what's going to be included in that comprehensive master plan in the Gateway area. area. And that's alluded to in some of these points here. So, the next slide we're going to turn to is our Village Center redevelopments. And as I noted, these are our smaller scale. We have about nine village centers. All of them are unique, and they exist in different contexts. But we have an illustrative example of how one of these village centers could possibly redevelop. And the concept here shows how there's a mix of uses. There's retail, there's service uses, and there are residential uses. The goal is to ensure that the village centers continue to operate as a hub for their neighborhoods and their villages, and that they provide that central gathering space for those areas. Obviously, the village centers were originally developed before GPS. They were developed before our current system of big-box stores that people shop at, or our online retail stores. So they have been on the front lines of adapting and changing over the last 50 years, and kind of trying to keep up with the times. We've already, in our past redevelopment efforts in the county, kind of focused on them for growth, and that's being carried forward in the Hoco by Design efforts. One of the goals of this is incorporating housing into the village centers. That's going to ensure that we have kind of a captured audience that supports the uses there. We also want to make sure we're activating our open spaces, and that the type of housing we're seeing could be a range. It's, it's going to be context-dependent on the areas that we're in. We're going to see multifamily housing, townhomes, affordable workforce housing, and the missing-middle housing options that are discussed in other chapters of the plan. So, within the concept here, you can see how the village center is being transformed to be more visible as a destination along the open space and pathway networks. All of the village centers throughout Columbia evolved based on the timeframe that they were originally developed in, and this is really continuing that evolution to show that they are successful. And we want to make sure those connections allow residents to access the center through multiple modes. Luckily, there is an existing pathway network and a road network throughout Columbia that we can enhance and build on. In particular, we want the centers to be more green, and incorporate more stem water management, open space, tree canopy, and native landscaping. As wonderful as the centers are, they are very heavy on the asphalt and the concrete. So we want to make sure that we're incorporating those green elements into them. And most important, when we talk about character, compatibility, and context, is that we want to be sensitive to the surroundings of each of the village centers. That means that building height, the mass transitions to the adjacent areas and neighborhoods are going to be appropriately scaled. That's going to be different for every single one of the village centers based on what's around them. And then on our next, moving away from village centers, and don't try to figure out where this is, because it is just a most, what is the most kind of generic example that we can come up with for suburban commercial office redevelopment? So we, previous slides, we were looking at specific areas. Here, this is an example of redevelopment in a phased format for a commercial suburban area. And what we're looking at is, right now, single-use commercial. This is like the big-box store with a few pad sites. And in this hypothetical example, how could we transform this prototypical commercial center? So, on the next slide, what you first see is, where you're most going to see the phased transition is areas that already have excess parking. We had pretty extensive parking requirements for a lot of these divisions, and then a lot of times, they went further, and they overbuilt even more parking. So, they kind of have underutilized spaces and an excess of parking, which allows for infill development. And this is exactly what we're seeing already. We're seeing a lot of infill happening on some of our areas, parking lots that already have an excess of parking lot. What we want to ensure is that we're guiding that infill development, making sure that we're getting the enhancements to the public realm that we previously discussed earlier in this presentation. And then in the second phase of our development, you'll start seeing the parking lot conversions continue. And this is where new buildings are placed on portions of the lot that can support a wide mix of uses, and that a parking is accommodated through different building forms. This is where we're going to want parking that meets the kind of use that it's like. So, I, the way I talk about this is, you come in to your home, you throw your coat on a hook on the wall, because you're going to be leaving in 20 minutes, and you want to grab it again. You have a lot of coats that you're only going to use a few months out of the year, and those go live in the closet. So, that's how we want to have our parking be designed, to better match how people use spaces. And then in the third phase of development, our, potentially our big-box store could be demolished. You know, let's say the online shopping takes over even more than it already has, and suddenly retail is not needing the same kind of spaces that we've built in the past. How can we transform these areas? In general, what we're trying to create here is mixed-use blocks, walkable streets, central plazas, and a full redeveloping area where people can park once and walk around the community, or if they live there, they have a range of uses that meet their needs. So, redevelopment, in addition to serving the needs of the public realm, it also offers a lot of opportunities for stormwater management, increasing tree canopy, making those connections to adjacent natural areas, and making sure that we have connections to other modes of transportation, bicycle, walking, and transit. And then, to achieve this, we talk about the policies and actions. It's really about setting design standards for the different activity centers, and having those be specific to the needs of those activity centers and the vision that we're trying to achieve. We want to ensure that redevelopment in these activity centers reduces impervious surface and increases open space. There was pretty broad general consensus in the feedback we got from the community that they'd rather see development go vertical and have these cherished public realm and usable open spaces, and that we want to make sure more than anything that we're addressing our stormwater management needs when we're going back into these areas that may not have been built to the standards that we have today. And then, and also investigating the opportunities for adding mixed-income housing and a different range of housing types into our activity centers. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Mary, who's going to dig into a lot of what we alluded to earlier, which is the context-sensitive design.
Hello. Okay. So, this topic of context-sensitive design, it primarily applies to infill development. As a reminder, infill, it is new development in an already-developed area, and it can range in scale and use. There can be small-scale infill in an established neighborhood, which could be the addition of a new home, one new home, or a few homes. Or there could be larger-scale infill, which could be a more significant development project in or around a mixed-use activity center, which Jessica was just talking about. Regardless of the infill being large or small, this plan suggests that it should be designed in a way that complements or is compatible with the character of its surroundings. I do want to note that compatibility doesn't mean that everything is uniform, or we're the same, and it might not even be identical housing types. It just means that the building form, the placement, and other design elements try to work together to create a cohesive character. So, this is an example that we included both in the plan and here in the presentation to show what context-sensitive design could look like in an established neighborhood. So in the drawing on the right-hand side of the screen, the light gray shape represents a new home, while all of the darker gray boxes are existing homes. In the top example, you can see how the new home, the box in light gray, can align with the existing neighborhood pattern. The orientation of the home is to the street is similar to others on the block, and the building size is also similar. In contrast to the example on the bottom, it shows that the new home is oriented at an angle rather than to the street, and its proportions are different. So we would consider the example on the bottom to be less compatible with its surroundings than the example on the top. And this is just a good example to show how form-based regulations or some hybrid codes could help guide form placement and size of new buildings, thus creating more compatible development. But one thing I do just want to point out, right, we're all trying to strike a balance in this general plan process. So there are other aspects that we certainly will have to be mindful of as we move forward with new development, as we've mentioned in previous work sessions. For example, stormwater management requirements. So sometimes, those will also have to help inform, in addition to character, where and how new infill homes may be placed on a lot. So, much of what we discussed might feel most applicable to the East, but Hoco by Design, we do provide guidance for infill development out in the rural West. Because we did hear throughout our planning process that there was a great deal of interest in seeing greater investment in our rural crossroads, while ensuring that we can preserve their rural character. So, in our focus areas appendix, we included some of these conceptual drawings, so that we can provide some guidance to future, the future comprehensive rezoning or future design guidelines. So these examples are intended to be helpful illustrations for how small-scale infill could fit within a rural context specifically to, in our rural crossroads. So here, you can see in this particular concept that new development setbacks match existing ones, new buildings are complementary to existing form, massing in architecture, and buildings are placed such that views to the farm fields remain. And this is another concept, or another drawing of that same concept, that shows ground-floor retail or offices located along the main street with upper-story residential, which could create opportunities for live-work arrangements. And then there's also a public green in this particular drawing. There's a public green in the center that could serve as a community gathering space. So specifically, the guidance in the plan as it pertains to context-sensitive design is to develop context-sensitive design standards that's appropriate for various scales of infill development, to effectively transition between larger developments and established uses, and also to encourage compatibility of small-scale infill within established neighborhoods. And some of the tools to address context-sensitive design include, as was mentioned previously, character-based code elements, neighborhood compatibility standards that emphasize building placement and size, and landscape requirements that can include buffers and desirable landscape treatments between new and existing development. So last, but certainly not least, the topic of historic preservation. So, in this particular section of this chapter, the plan recognizes that restoring, preserving, and documenting our historic resources continues to be especially important as they contribute to the county's diverse character, and also provide significant economic benefits. A little bit of background information, we have nearly 1,000 properties on the Howard County Historic Sites Inventory. We have two locally-designated historic districts, Eloquent City and Lawyer's Hill. However, on our future land use map, we have actually identified four areas with the historic community's character area. Of course, Eloquent City, Lawyer's Hill is our locally-designated historic districts, but also Savage and Historic Elkridge are identified as with the historic community character area. Okay. So, of those, I already mentioned that, okay. So basically, so recognizing that these particular areas, these are places that we want to preserve and strengthen, right? That's where they're located within that Preserve, Strengthen, Enhance, Transform framework. So the plan calls for exploring things like conservation districts as an alternative to a local historic district designation. So what is basically a conservation district? Well, or what happens within a conservation district? Basically, it suggests that any new development within these areas, they should be compatible in form, both for size and placement of building, more so over architectural building features, which is a priority within a locally, local historic district designation. So within a conservation district, there might be an additional layer of review for new construction in additions to ensure that the form that's being established there or being put there is compatible. So in the strengthening and historic preservation topic, we also recognize ways to strengthen historic preservation, such as exploring the use of transfer of development rights or easement programs to preserve historic properties outside of historic districts. Where appropriate, the plan suggests that we encourage the design of new construction be compatible with neighboring historic structures. Also, of course, the plan suggests we need to continue to promote the historic tax credit program. And then there's another, some, a new, an opportunity for a new program, which is we should try to learn, try to identify what are some of the most valuable historic resources outside of historic districts, and establish efforts to protect them through something like a historic landmarks program. Which there is actually one in our neighboring Baltimore County and other jurisdictions. Again, that's used to try to identify historic sites outside of historic districts that we want to ensure have protections. Finally, the plan also recommends that we broaden our documentation efforts to accurately tell the story of our diverse past, of our diverse heritage, including telling stories such as indigenous life in pre-colonial times, plantations in the lives of the enslaved, and stories about early industry and agriculture. So, not to sound too repetitive, but overall, the strengthening of historic preservation section pretty much has four key policies, all listed on this slide, which I've spoken to throughout the presentation. And again, they are pursue new types of historic designations to protect or preserve historic communities and sites. This include researching and creating a mechanism similar to a historic landmarks program, or exploring a conservation district. Strengthening existing programs, including updating the Eloquent City and Lawyer's Hill historic district guidelines. Continuing to provide incentives for restoration and preservation, such as continue our tax credit program, exploring transfer of development rights, and continuing to support our cemetery restoration grant program. And we again suggest that we should be expanding our documentation around the county's diverse resources. So, in conclusion, so I know we presented a variety of tools and options for how we can try to prioritize character in the future in an existing development, including with an emphasis on our historic preservation. So this plan also provides guidance for which tools may be appropriate where, all of which, though, would be further evaluated through the implementation, the next steps of implementation, which again are comprehensive rezoning, code rewrite, future updates to design guidelines, or potentially establishing new design guidelines or codes. So with that, I'm happy to turn it back to the chair for our discussion. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate some of those details, because I, at least I know a lot of my questions are about some of the implementation of things like character areas, so I appreciate the walkthrough. We'll get started today with our rotation with District 4, Councilman Young.
Okay, great. As the council representative for five of the 10 Columbia villages, needless to say, I was concerned about your recommendation to change Newtown zoning in this particular chapter. And I noted that you set forth the major provisions of Newtown zoning that include flexibility in land use, and noted that Newtown permits all uses allowed in other county zoning districts, except heavy manufacturing and mobile homes. Open space preservation. Newtown zoning requires 36% of the lands zoned Newtown, B for open space. Overall housing density may not exceed 2.5 dwelling units per acre of Newtown zone land. And mixed-use requirements, Newtown requires a mix of various land uses with minimum and maximum percentages, and allows flexibility in the geographic placement of those uses. Then there's a comment saying that the general plan does not change any of those provisions, yet there is language in there that says, "We recommend changing Newtown zoning." So my question is, what exactly are you recommending to change in Newtown zoning?
Thanks. So, a lot of the, what the general plan talks about for actually changing the development regulations for Newtown zoning originated in, prior, but really succinctly talked about in the development assessment that was done in 2016 to 2018. And that's really because a lot of the way that the regulation framework in Newtown zoning was set up is for greenfield development under a single owner, who has a lot of control mechanisms and a single vision for the kind of development they want to see.
Can you give me an example of that?
In terms of the
What you just said.
Framework?
Yes.
Yeah, sure. So, for instance, we have the FDP model, essentially, that was created. But before that, the organizing structure that Jim
Can you please, when you use an acronym, can you please say what it stands for?
Yes, I'm so sorry. So let, so let me backtrack, is that Newtown zoning was really designed with a developer who says, "I own a lot of land now. I have an idea for what I want to build, and I want to work with the county to come up with a zoning regulatory framework that allows me to have a lot of flexibility as I build this out." So I want to start with a very general concept, which is our preliminary development plan. And as you've seen, that's that one giant scanned map that just kind of shows, these are the general areas of uses and where I might want to put them. And then that gets refined further in the concept sketch plans, which are then overtaken by the final development plans. So we have something like 268 final development plans throughout the Newtown zoning framework. So, we have something like 268 final development plans throughout the Newtown zoning framework that all operate almost as individual zoning regulations for their areas. And that made sense at the time because they were really being added as those areas came online. So, they would finish one area, then they would go to the next one, design the zoning regs for what they want to achieve there, and move on to the next one. It's now built out, which means that when there are changes happening in Newtown zoning through redevelopment under different owners, it's very hard to administer, well, what are the specific issues with that FDP? Who wrote that FDP? What was the language they used? Why, when we have a, you know, the same exact kind of uses in these two areas, but based on how the person who drafted the FDP wrote that sentence, we're going to get different outcomes for having to administer and interpret it. So, those are the, some of the difficulties with how the Newtown
So, how would we change it? I want to get back to my question.
Yes. So, as Mary alluded to, the organizing principles for the, that created the character of Columbia, they're not encapsulated in the zoning regulations as they are defined right now. It doesn't speak to design elements that people care about. You know, I've lived in the world for Newtown zoning for a while now, and a lot of the concerns the community raised and concerns they had for how redevelopment is happening in Newtown are currently enshrined in the existing zoning regs. Those can continue to move forward. So, if we want to have more guidance to ensure that infill development and redevelopment actually reflects what the community wants and the character we want to see, we have to come up with different tools.
Other than the village activity centers that you have throughout the, throughout Columbia, what would, what other kinds of design guidelines would even be applicable here? And since we have a design advisory panel that is only advisory without any teeth, how would we even ensure that those were fulfilled?
Right. So, then you would want to create different guidance for the different areas. So, the village centers as activity centers where we're actually seeking for some transformation to those areas, those can have separate manuals and guidance that shows how those want to develop. That exists right now in our existing regulatory framework because we have this process for redeveloping the village centers as major or minor redevelopments. And then for our other existing scattered areas, our
Let me go back to the village centers.
Sure.
The village center guidelines actually, as I'm sure you know, are not all that clear, which we had, had to deal with on a very personal basis as the zoning board. But, there is, I, I guess I'm still, are, are you suggesting then that what DPZ would recommend in comprehensive rezoning is that there be specific guidelines for how many apartments can be built, how tall the buildings can be, what the setbacks would have to be, et cetera, in these village, which were all, most of which were not set forth in the village redevelopment zoning regulations? Is that what you're saying?
So
Trying to drill down here. I want to know what it is you guys are going to suggest.
I'm following you, and I can talk endlessly
Because the community is very concerned about this.
Yeah. So, so as you alluded to, what we have right now in the redevelopment for the village centers is we have a process framework in the code that says, like, a person who wants to redevelop this area is going to propose how they're going to redevelop it, and here's a few criteria that we're going to ask our zoning board to interpret. Does this
Yes, we're well aware of this.
And what is being proposed in this plan essentially is, we need to look at these village center areas and see what kinds of tools would be appropriate to steer the development that we want.
Do you have any recommend, are you, I mean, you're, somebody is saying in this general plan that you are recommending changes to Newtown zoning. I assume that somebody in DPZ has specifically thought about this issue, what those changes would be.
Right. And so, they're talking about what's the appropriate mix of housing and the different kinds of uses that should be in the village center.
In the village centers, okay. Now, right now, to this point in time, we've had two village center redevelopment plans, and they have all been apartments. So, are you suggesting, and I hope you are, that the future village center redevelopments would have to be a mix of housing?
So, I, I think the plan suggests that there will be a different mix of housings for the village centers.
That's what it says.
Yes, that's
So, would you, are you going to suggest that for the comprehensive rezoning? Is that one of the changes you would make here?
So, the comprehensive zoning is going to have to implement the general plan as it's adopted. So, it's not currently adopted. Once it's adopted, what we will do in the comprehensive rezoning process is look at the strategies that are actually codified, and we will implement those in the Newtown zone. So, yes, we will look at what is the appropriate mix of housing for the different village centers. I don't want to give you a ubiquitous answer because there's nine different village centers, and they all have a different context, and so what's appropriate in those is going to be different.
Well, one of the village centers has already been redeveloped.
It has been.
Yes, so there's really eight. And that is one of the amendments I'm going to make to the plan, just to make sure that it's clear.
Well, I, I would caution against saying, "It's been redeveloped, we're done," because obviously redevelopment is a constant process, reinvestment is a constant process, there can always be improvements made, it might just not be a major overhaul. It could just be a small reinvestment.
So, you're suggesting, I think, that more apartments could be built at Wild Lake, then?
That is not what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting that the goal of the general plan is to identify growth areas for reinvestment, and that we would consider all of the village centers that exist in Columbia to be appropriate for identifying as this activity center. Because the activity centers and the future land use map, we have to determine what that land use is going to be so that it can form the zoning that's applicable. And I wouldn't want to set up a different zoning for Wild Lake than the other village centers. They should all have the same kind of zoning.
So, are you also suggesting that activity, that village activity centers would be rezoned as of right? That the, that the zoning regulations would be such that they wouldn't go through a process, but the zoning regulations would just establish what they would have to do if they wanted to redevelop the village centers?
No, I mean, it, it's much too soon to, to discuss what the implementing framework would be, but all zones and all districts within the county have a process that's associated with them. And what that process is going to be is really determined once we get into implementation. The general plan says, "This is the goal. This is what we want to achieve. This is the vision that we want out there." And then what we do in the next phase is say, "This is the process, these are the tools, these are the steps that can help us achieve that."
All right. Go on to Mr. Youngman, and then Ms. Walsh, Dr. Jones, myself, and back to Ms. Young.
What define, well, in the, in the context of what we've talked about this morning, what defines existing community? We've talked about existing community character, compatibility with existing community, but what is the existing community? Is it what directly abuts that property? Is it a three-mile radius? Is it, what's existing community?
I mean, do you mean, I'm not sure if I, if I follow.
Like, like, we want redevelopment to be compatible with the existing community, and one of the ways we can fudge that is to fudge how we define existing community case by case as we're trying to.
So, my first answer to that is, if you take a look at our, so I think we would start with the character area descriptions, which we have a technical appendix that really does kind of elaborate on what each of these 18, how these, each of these 18 character areas are defined. So, that's where we would start by defining the existing community. And then as Ms. Bella had mentioned, all of these different tools that would be used to help preserve or promote character in future development, future infill development, that will vary depending upon the location. Conservation districts aren't appropriate everywhere. Design guidelines might need to be different depending on the area. So, the specific character-based tool for each area, community within the county, that will have to be determined in the implementation stage. And, and building off that, those implementing tools, that's where you actually get to, like, the geographic application of like, what does this area, does this manual cover? Is this in this design guideline or in a different design guideline?
Because, you know, let's say you have, take Eloquent City, Route 40 corridor. Everything's R-20, except for the actual strip of Route 40, which is commercial. You know, the, the Chadham Mall property is abutted by Route 40 on one side, commercial on two sides, and R-20 in the back. So, what is compatible? You know, you know, obviously, commercial is compatible because that's what's there now, but, you know, is a 12-story apartment building compatible? Are structured parking compatible? I just, I don't know because you have such different land uses sort of abutting each other and abutting that property.
I think this is an emphasis more on form, right? So, ensure that whatever is developed there in the future has a compatible form as opposed to, you know, to some extent, in addition to use, but this is a lot, you know, focused on what should the form of all of our future development look like? If it's an area that we've clearly identified as a place to transform, that's going to look different. And then those transitions will help ensure that there's more compatibility between what's new and existing. But, but, but more about, about the, the form in these areas.
In the areas to transform, we should expect, aren't going to, the, the, sort of the standard of consistent with existing community character is going to take a lower priority in that because it's, it is designated to transform it, not to just keep it consistent, right?
So, so, it depends. So, because you want it to be existing with a, so there, for instance, where you have an area that we've designated for growth and transformation, and it's abutting established communities where we don't want to see that level of transformation, within the parcel that's going to be transforming in the zoning, you're going to have regs that basically explain how you're going to step down, buffer, change the, the actual pattern, the spacing of that transforming area so that it flows within those, into those existing established communities in a way that goes from transformation seamlessly into enhancement and retention. So, that's how, what you're trying to achieve, and that's where you get into the implementing stage, and that's why you have the zoning regs that will do that. And then we're looking at even additional tools that really can help us do this in a more design-focused way than a traditional zoning use-based document can.
Because we've talked a lot about, and I know this is code-related, but we, we've talked a lot about use and sort of the, the density of a, of a building. But, you know, if you're up against an R-20, maybe, maybe the issue is really going to be height.
And that's because, like, I can show you 20 different projects that all have the exact same density, and they're all going to have a different character, they're going to have a different feel, they're going to flow differently into their established areas. So, that's where you get into design so that you're really saying, "Hey, this surrounding established community has this character." For instance, we say, like, hey, they're all pitched roofs, all the roofs here are pitched. So, maybe abutting those areas, when you're going to incorporate other housing forms, we want to retain the pitched roof style, for example. So, that's kind of what you're getting into when you talk about the design and the compatibility of those areas. And that, it's not related necessarily to the use, it's related to how people experience space, and if it's designed to that human experience.
And then, and then as you're implementing that, where, how do you find that, you know, the, the general plan's the very high level, then we'll get down to regulations, and, and, you know, you want regulations to, to create as much predictability as we can, but then you kind of have that gray area of, you know, "I own that property, and, you know, all of a sudden, I've got what amounts to basically covenants on my property as far as what I'm going to be allowed to do, what I'm not going to be allowed to do because of something that got built next to me, possibly way after I built what I built." So, how do you sort of manage through that?
Yeah, I think the difference is that, you know, it's that covenants might say, "Hey, each, each individual property, we want to, we kind of want to look at it for, for what you're proposing in design, and do we feel that it kind of keeps the same rhythms of the community?" When we're looking at code rewrites and zoning, what we want to say is, we don't want to have ubiquitous sameness. We want to be able to allow buildings to adapt and evolve. You know, different uses require different spaces, but we want to ensure is that the general massing, like where windows are placed, the height, kind of the, the depth of the public realm space, those all are set in a way that is compatible with the adjacent uses. We're not saying you have to build your building to follow the same architectural styles as the person next to you. We're saying you have to follow similar notes and rhythms so that they work in harmony.
And then the last, last piece of this, because again, I think it's all part of the same implementation, is, you know, who, it's, it's hard to build this into regs. You're going to build it into regs, you're going to find whatever balance you can with specific versus the flexibility, and then, you know, it ends up at the DAP. And the DAP is generally, on a good day, it's architects and designers and people that really get this stuff, and sometimes it's not, because you've seen the different levels of expertise and experience that we all, of these, these folks that get appointed to these boards. So, you know, does it make sense to reference, even in this general plan, that, you know, sort of more, I don't say authority, but, but the DAP is going to have a bigger role going forward, and that, that the members of the DAP should be people that can really evaluate these things? I mean, I'm looking at the four of you, and you guys should be the DAP, you know, but I don't think you're allowed to be. You know, because you kind of get it, you, you understand how things need to flow, but we don't always have folks on these, these
Yeah, so
Boards that understand that.
Yeah, if I could just jump in with regards to this plan, so within the first policy statement, one of the specific actions is review the current design advisory panel review areas and approve guidelines for updates. Consider whether the role of the DAP should be expanded to other areas within Howard County. So, there is a discussion about expanding the role of the DAP. So, if that, if that anyway answers your question. And I'm starting to need reading glasses, so.
Okay. And then we, and then we
I have, I'm confused as a result of this plan.
Yes, this plan has
Yes.
Given us, many of us a rude awakening with our
I'm glad you guys are, are struggling with the type size as well. I thought it was just me. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Walsh?
I'll make an observe, observation before I ask my question, which is, both of these council members asked you for specifics, examples, like, it's not an accident. We want to see what is the effect of what you're proposing in this plan on, you know, a known entity. I would say, tell me about Long Gate over, you know, tell me about Long Gate Activity Center particularly. You have a, you know, a wreck in parks thing behind it, you have a single family detached on one side, you've got, you know, whatever goes on the other, and the, a fire department, like, what is compatible? Like, these are all words, and they don't, they can mean whatever anybody wants them to. And that's what we need from you, is a concrete, I'm not saying you have to give us the 20 that you had in mind, but I think it's what we all struggle with, is we can all, especially the lawyers up here, say that a word means whatever we want and our client wants it to mean. So, what we need is some assurance from the proponents of this plan that it is what we think our constituents want. And so, that would go a long way, I think, in providing some assurance to us that we're aligned, because we may be, but resisting, you know, what I think are pretty obvious questions about what are, you know, tell me how this would be treated differently. I don't know, that could depend. Well, that, then what are we here for? It's not, you know, it's not an accident. I think the next chapters were going to say it. I wanted to know if Office of Law was here, because I want to say, what would that Hickory Ridge have decision and, and appeal look like? Not appeal, that's the wrong word, but the, the request to us as a zoning board, you know, this is where the general plan is actually put into play, is we get a request, a petition to change something, and out of your 700 pages or the existing 200 pages, somebody's going to pick out three sentences and say, "This definitively describes why what I am advocating for should be, you know, immediately approved without question." And that, that is not enough, you know, you guys like that this is so long. It scares me, because it just means there's now three times more sentences in this document that someone's going to excerpt and put in a piece of paper and feel very strongly that they are 100% right. So, I mean, that is why you keep getting these tell me a specific example questions, because it's that assurance. And again, maybe there is alignment, you know, but I, I don't hear a definitive answer. I don't even hear, like, let me get back to you. I mean, I asked the same thing when we, we talk about big picture legislation, Forest Conservation Act. Show me how this calculation is different under this regime and what's being proposed now. It never happens, and nobody ever knows, but I think that's a real disconnect, and I think for the five of us, but also the people we represent, it would go a long way into. it would go a long way into doing it. My, um, my overarching question on this subject and, and pretty much all of it is, is really taking a step back. Welcome, welcome, and I love to be in this room. The, uh, if we could get a brief overview, like, I think Jessica, you're new to this too. Like, we're hearing about a plan that a lot of you weren't even involved in this now years-long process. Both in terms of, you know, who, who is the team going forward on this as we get it to whatever ends up being approved by this council later this year? You know, who are the ones pushing it to that point? Who's, who's not here, right? We're talking about Newtown Center is, my understanding is DPC has a contingent employee who's dedicated to that subject. Was she involved in this? Is she continuing to be involved in it? What's her input? But like, what is the team that was involved with this in the years past? And, and who, you know, who's involved going forward? I think that would be helpful because, you know, for the last three or four months, we've had interim this and that, and I have three jobs and they're all very hard. You know, I'd like to know, this is the concerted focus group. These are the three or four people that are going to get this to, to the end and, and, and help us understand what's being proposed.
So, if the question is, who is going to be now taking this plan to the finish line? It is going to be a combination of our new director, me, the deputy director, and Jessica Bella, deputy director. So we're the leadership team here at, at the Department of Planning and Zoning. Of course, we have our amazing staff, uh, led by the Division of Comprehensive and Community Planning, Kristin O'Connor, Kate Ballinger, Sarah Latimer. So we are primarily the team who is getting this across the finish line. In terms of who has been involved in the past, I've been around since pretty much almost day one when we started this process, as has Kate, as has Kristin, as has the Division of Comprehensive and Community Planning. So we have all been involved in all of the engagement. We can share with you whatever it is that we have heard from the community, from our planning advisory committee, from our strategic advisory groups. So we have all of that background information. In terms of who assisted with the drafting of these plans, that was very much a co-, a collaboration between our consultant team and our Division of Comprehensive and Community Planning. And then there were a lot of sections where we had to reach out to some of our other divisions to assist with some content, such as who we have with us here today, Beth Burgess from our, uh, Division of Resource Conservation. We worked with our Division of Land Development, we worked with our Division of Zo-, our, um, zoning division, and we've worked with many other agencies. And all of those agencies are mentioned when it gets to, if I could just jump ahead to implementation in Chapter eleven, that implementation matrix. So this plan is something that is for the county as a whole, which is clearly articulated and identified who is responsible for implementation in Chapter eleven, which we're going to get to in our final work session. So these are the people who have been involved throughout the process. We have had multiple meetings with many other county agencies to help review this plan prior to bringing it to council. So I would say many, many staff in the county have been involved, continue to be involved. But now, yes, we do have a new leadership team here at DPC that's taking it to the finish line and will continue to be committed once we get past that finish line and into implementation.
Okay, so, oh, you could, yeah, and I, I just want to say, I, I have been involved with this plan because I served on the Planning Advisory Committee as a representative of a community stakeholder throughout the implementation of the plan. So I've been following it religiously for the last, uh, four years? Three years, so, yeah, in a couple of months. And then, uh, Ms. Walsh, can I address your, your original opening comments?
Please, yes.
Because I, I think that that, I hear that frustration, I understand it. And that is one of the, one of the reasons this plan is so long is in response to that, those concerns that we heard from the very beginning. Because, uh, the wonderful part of the English language is that, uh, words can mean different things. And the reason there's so much length to this is that providing the additional context for those statements allows us to very clearly articulate, this is what we mean by these words, this is the intent of these words. So that is one of the reasons we're trying to address that and get it more specific. We also have, one of the reasons what we're talking about today is the, um, technical, uh, focus area appendix where we, where we focus on illustrative concepts. Because we're trying to show people, when we say this in this plan, this is one example of how that could come to fruition. The, the difficulty that we face trying to address those comments and questions is that the role of the general plan is supposed to stay at high level. It's supposed to be a broad set of visions and allow for the flexibility necessary to have the right tools at the time to address opportunities, challenges, and changing dynamics. And that's why we're, a lot of the, how this is going to play out, how this is going to look, what is this going to specifically apply? That's going to come into play when we talk about the pattern books, the design manuals, the actual zoning and the code rewrite. Those are all going to be public engagement processes. So this is not like a, you approve this plan, it goes into the back room and we just generate it and that's it. No, it's going to be a continuous process. You're going to see, what, how are we actually applying the goal of the general plan as adopted to these specific zones? And how are the manuals going to, going to move forward to implement that? Does that address your concern and comments?
I mean, I think, I mean, yeah, I get the context part. I, I just think, I, I mean, again, I worry that that, that context gets lost in the, you know, the persuasive piece that's filed six years from now. You know, and it, and then the onus is on, on me as the zoning board or hopefully our, our advisors or the general community to go, oh, but look, here's this illustrative example in, you know, Technical Appendix C, page three thousand, that's, that shows that maybe this isn't really what that sentence means. I mean, we're all laughing, but overwhelming was like ridiculous. You're overwhelming, it was overwhelming.
I, I was with you, I watched every single minute of the Hickory Ridge Villa case. I unders-, I, I saw the struggle that you had applying that. That is why what we want to do when we're implementing these implementing documents is not have you go, this is what the general plan says as a general guidance. It says, this is what the general plan said, and it created this, 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 more detailed implementing documents that it's very clear, this is exactly what's applied. So when you're looking at the criteria, you're using those documents to compare and, uh, the development that's being proposed to.
Okay, okay. And so we have our director-director and our two deputies. And that is where the dust is settled and hallelujah. Okay. Okay. It's, I mean, again, it's really nice to have definitive, you know, someone on the other side with the, you know, this is their landing place, so. Thank you. Okay.
Dr. Jones?
Good morning, trying to unmute, sorry about that. Good morning. So I, uh, don't have any specific questions. I enjoyed reading the chapter. I thank you so much for all of your work. I feel that, um, given the questions from my colleagues, that more detail, while it could be helpful, I like the bird's eye view where we can go forth and implement legislation in the future, or future councils can do that. So I'm happy with it. It was very explanatory and very thorough for me, so no questions for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. So, I mean, I guess I just have sort of a half-follow-up. But essentially, when we're talking about Newtown, I mean, this, I'm hoping that this means that the, when the zoning code is rewritten, I mean, part of the challenge when it came to Hickory Ridge, you're going through, we're checking the portions of the code and it says, to create a Newtown district, you need this much acreage and this much continuous. And we're so past that, you know, it's, it's almost like we're reading, um, old textbooks and trying to apply, um, you know, today's principles to it. So as part of that, you know, general plan says these changes need to be made. And then you'll be working through, there's obviously going to be a public process for when we rewrite these things. But I guess what I'm looking for is certainty that we'll have very clear criteria when it comes to the code. So we're not left with this, um, you know, the previous general plan, I think Ms. Walsh alluded to it, but it was all things to all people. Um, and this one is much more specific. I very much appreciate the illustrative concept where you can see the larger building. You can see the, you know, townhome type, whether that's a triplex or a townhome. I can't tell from the picture, but what I can tell is that the forms shift. Um, and then you sort of gradually approach, um, the lake because the, uh, Owen Brown is the, um, example. And so I guess that's really my question. So at, following the general plan, we will have much more comprehensive criteria within these zoning regulations. And what is in these, um, policy and implementing actions is what then directs those changes.
Yeah, and, and the real idea is to, to make sure we're using the right tool to achieve the right goals. So if you want to get into a very specific design, um, pattern in a particular area that's like a very defined regional or geographic area, like a village center, the zoning regs are not going to get you there. They're, they're not really designed to get there. What they say is, this is an area that's targeted for this kind of design focus. These are like the basic building blocks for uses and densities. And then you go into that, that design manual, the pattern book or something else that says, this is more specific, what this particular area needs. So those are all adopted, they become, they have public engagement processes, and they're publicly available for interpretation. And there's a lot of, it's, it's, they're engagement.
Jumping ahead, would you be able to talk about what you, when you've studied the pattern book concept and the framework for the public realm, how long have those things taken in other places who've done those kinds of exercises? And what would that process look like? What can, um, we expect and what can the public expect?
It's, it's
And I don't know if that's really for Matt, who's worked in a variety of different communities.
Yeah, I, I, I will see if, if, if Matt can tee up and answer what his experience has been. You know, there are so many different communities that have tackled this and trying to achieve different goals, and it's taken different, um, lengths of time. And then obviously, uh, actually towards implementation, there's so many private factors that really, uh, influence when reinvestment or redevelopment goes forward. So like, when we'll actually see it come to fruition.
Yes, will Giant ever sell the Village Center? Will Giant ever be interested in redeveloping a Village Center? Yes.
Right, so, um, Matt, I'm going to see if you can address kind of in your experience, what is the process for creating manuals and pattern books and kind of length of time? Matt, you're muted.
Yep.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I apologize, yes, in just kind of following the conversation, I realize the frustration that, that's around the table because it, it's, it's frustrating sometimes that this is a, a issue that gets addressed in parts, right? So the general plan sets a general context, it creates an umbrella of ideas and vision and to make sure the compass points in the right direction. But then if we really actually want to see anything come out of the ground the right way or the ground preserved in the right way, you have to quickly get into the next step, which would be the comprehensive rezoning, the design manuals, the pattern books and the like. And you have some choices as you go through this. One is whether you want to create, you know, guidelines that are encouraging and incentivizing and trying to move things along quickly, or whether you're trying to, um, say, slow and steady is okay with us. We're fine with that. And it might go back into like, when you were talking about the DAP earlier, some communities I work in will create, uh, pattern books and design guidelines that you really need a professional to interpret. Otherwise, it's really hard to administer. Other people get frustrated because then that individual might have a different vision than what was in the documents before because they're using their professional judgment. So those communities will actually create guidelines and rules that you can measure, count, or identify. So then staff is very qualified to be able to administer those. So, you know, it's kind of how you want to set these things up as well and how you want to do it. In terms of, you know, how long it takes and how effective they are, I kind of go back to one of the very first meetings I had with you all when I was boots on the ground. And it was, well, what creates change in the community? And, you know, we went through it and said, well, you have to have the demographics that want that change. You know, you're talking about different housing types, if nobody wants to live there, they're not going to do very well. You have to have property owners who want to develop or redevelop their property. Otherwise, these things are just aspirational and may never happen because you control, somebody controls the property. You have to have the right developers who want to build that thing, whatever that thing is, otherwise there's no interest. You have to have the bank and lending community behind that project because without the money, the developer can't do it. And then finally, that, that last piece, that twenty percent, are these government regulations and the design books and the things we're talking about right now. And, and they're there again to be ready for when those other four things align. Or you're going to have to try to find a way that you want to incentivize and jumpstart those other four entities to want to start to move forward. But in some ways, there's no guarantees as soon as you adopt that document, that change is going to occur immediately. All you're doing is setting up the environment and the arena for what the expectations might be for the government and the community if and when that happens. So, uh, it's a little bit of a, a long-winded answer, I know, but I wanted to set some of those, those goalposts out there for, you know, what or why things might have to happen before you can actually implement some of these ideas in this general plan.
Thank you, Matt. I appreciate that. I think, I mean, I'm more personally focused on the pattern books because that feels like something within the realm, the circle of our control. We can somewhat, um, manage that versus these outside financing factors and interest rates and things like that. I'll just say for, um, the next time that we are together, which I think is, um, Dynamic Neighborhoods, it, it would be really helpful just to hear how you envision that process going. And I know this is probably very painful for you guys because you've been working, you know, for three, four years to get to this point. And now I'm like, okay, what's next? Like, can we just finish this one first? But hearing what that process and timeline would look like for those pattern books would be very helpful, um, just in preparing us and preparing the public to engage in this process. Because while it might be sort of that final twenty percent of the recipe, it is, I view it as a bit of a step one. If we want to do this, we have to tell them how we want them to do this. I fully understand that we can't just write it and then it will be built magically. But it would be really cool if that happened for the, some of the illustrative concepts there. So, thank you. Ms. Yon?
Back to specifics, sorry. But there are specific references here in this chapter to specific things that, again, really concern me. And that is this specific reference to the two thousand and eighteen, Development Regulations Assessment and annotated on outline for our zoning ordinances, um, which is the, that references on page twenty-seven. And then on page, I think it's twenty-nine, there is a specific recommendation that says, "Build on the two thousand and eighteen Development Regulations Assessment to update the county zoning regulations and subdivision and land development regulations and policies. Incorporate opportunities to codify current practice and current regulations and design standards for new developments, infill developments, and redevelopments." We don't have the two thousand and eighteen Development Regulations Assessment. I'm sure it's available to us, but I'm sure it's another one or two hundred pages. I know that it took place over three years. I went to a number of those meetings. We don't have the time or the ability at this point in time to read that two thousand and eighteen Development Regulations Assessment. And, and my, in my own opinion, leave something like this in here, not even knowing what it says. I mean, if I left this sentence in here, that would say, oh, to me, oh, I agree that we should build on the two thousand and eighteen Development Regulations, Regulations Assessment to update our zoning, county zoning regulations, which I assume is what you all will be using to build your recommendations for comprehensive zoning. I don't know what those regulations say. And that's a lot more to be reading and digesting. At this point, again, I'm just telling you, I guess it's more of a statement how I feel. I feel more comfortable amending out this language. You may still base it on those two thousand and eighteen Development Regulations, but I don't want somebody coming back, and I, this goes to Ms. Walsh's point. I don't want somebody coming back and say, well, those two thousand and eighteen regulations said X, Y, Z, and this zoning regulation is, I think, exactly what it was that they said. And now that they're building on that, that means you have to decide it this way. I don't, or you have to, you have to interpret what you're going to be doing at DPC this way. I'm just not comfortable leaving language in here on something as big as these two thousand and eighteen regulations, which I know focused a lot on the Columbia Newtown zoning. So I'm making that statement and then I will ask this question because this is a word again that is in here that isn't defined, but it's in here throughout. And again, a word that I think will come back to haunt us over, and when I say us, I'm pointing to the council as the zoning board because this is how it works in Howard County, Ms. Eisenberg, okay? You haven't seen it yet in action, but You haven't seen it yet in action, but I can guarantee you this is how it works. And that is the word flexibility. We will see this over and over and over again when we are sitting as the zoning board, and it is in this plan over and over and over again. What does that mean? And people will interpret that to mean whatever it is they want it to mean. So that, when you say, oh, it has context, the context is, so we can do whatever we want. And that's the context that will be argued to us, that, oh, yeah, with, well, the general plan said that we have to be flexible here, so you need to be flexible in your approach to this particular thing. That's more important than what it is that we're, you know, don't look behind the curtain for, you know, the, the man who's, you know, pulling the levers. Just look at these words that are right here in front of you.
So I'm just going to kind of quickly talk a little bit about my understanding of the Development Regulations Assessment. I understand where you're coming from, though. But basically, when that was completed, that was a very thorough review of our zoning regulations to try to understand how they might be able to be streamlined or improved or just a more effective tool for implementing our zoning regs. And I think after that assessment was done, you know, it's about 99 pages, it is available on our website. But after that-
As I said.
After that assessment, well, yes, when we're all done, we are going to get to page 3,000.
There we go. Yes.
Yeah, but, yeah. But anyway, the point is, is that all of the, the extent of the recommended changes that came out of that assessment, I'm, my understanding is, well, I think the decision was, well, we don't want to jump into changing all of these zoning regulations because it's so significant. So we should really first do this general plan update to get a better sense and understanding from the community as a whole, you know, what is your vision for the future, to ensure that these recommended zoning changes still jive with what our future vision is going to be. So then, next step, once we get into the zoning regulation update, we'll still refer to some of those recommendations in the 2018 assessment because some of them were just process improvements, efficiency improvements. But we would try to make sure that whatever those recommendations are, we don't want to reinvent the wheel, we, real wheel, we don't want to do a whole other analysis of those zoning regulations. We at least want to use that assessment as our basis to understand where we can start. And then we'll have to take a look at the vision and the plan to make sure that those recommended zoning changes still align with this new plan's vision. And then Jess, what did you want to say?
Yeah, and building off what Mary says, it's really the, the Development Regulations Assessment, it jumpstarts our comprehensive rezoning process. Because the first thing you do is, what do we have right now? You know, what's going on in our current? So, for example, you know, there's a zoning regulation text amendment that happens, and it changes a few lines in one of the zoning districts. But because zoning code is very referential, there might be a district or a provision of some other part of the zoning code that because we made this text amendment over here, suddenly it's outdated or confusing, or it doesn't have the support it needs. So a lot of what the regulations do is how you set up your code and how it's all referencing each other, you need to look at that to make sure that it's all being updated together and that maybe as you move forward in the next 20 years, you don't have the same things occurring because you have a different setup for your regulations. That has to, we have to dig into that when we get to the next step to say, hey, are these recommendations still make sense? It's a very technical document, it's really providing us guidance from zoning experts on this is how zoning codes can be set up to be effective. And then getting to your specific question about flexibility and what does it mean? So I'm not going to do a word search on flexibility and then address every single context for how it's used and what's, but in general, when we're talking about flexibility, particularly when we're in this chapter, talking about quality by design, what we mean is the outside of the building, people's experience of it, the public forum, that should be predictable, that should be very clearly established in our guidelines. But uses change faster than regulations can keep up. How people, like, you know, the expansion of microbreweries and how people want to visit those areas and the culture that grew up over that, that came on very quickly. We want to make sure that the building form and the public realm that, that we're creating can adapt to uses as they change over time. So that's what we mean by flexibility. We want the, the adaptability of our built investments, of the resources that we put into permanent infrastructure that's hard to change, to be designed in a way that it can adapt over time as our culture, our values, and our needs change. That's what we mean by flexibility, that's how we're interpreting it. I don't know if you guys have anything to add to that.
Well, I'm still concerned about the 2018 regulations, and there are many references to changing Newtown zoning based on that. I, I'm wondering, you know, short of me having to read that 100-page document, can you share with me any major recommendations that were made in that 2018 document regarding Newtown zoning that as the representative of five of these villages, I should know?
I can give you a, a high-level answer.
Okay.
And then I know it looks like Jess is trying to dig in right now. So I'll kick it off with just suggesting so in, in the plan, it basically says that some of the recommendations from the assessment said that, in part, significant changes to the Newtown zoning district, experts cite vague, poorly defined language in some cases, but too much detailed language in others as a challenge to administering Newtown zoning. So basically, that's sort of, and then they also say that there's an absence of flexibility in Newtown zoning and requirements, and they require multiple rounds of approvals, and there's a concern that it could put Columbia at a disadvantage when we're competing for future investment. So because there's a, a kind of-
Well, those words are in the general plan.
Those words are in the general plan.
In fact, I actually have, I know them well enough that I know that they're in the general plan.
Yes. So I just wanted to give you sort of the high level-
Because that was one of my questions. Why would we, why would, why would we be at a competitive disadvantage in Columbia when Columbia is basically built out other than what is still, what is ongoing with downtown Columbia and what is envisioned by some for the Village Centers?
For the Village Center redevelopment.
Is there, I, I mean, I don't know what else, what other competitive disadvantage we could be in.
Yeah, so first I'll say, there's only five pages dedicated to Newtown. So if you want to just do a five-page reading, that'll get you all the questions, all your questions answered.
In the 2018-
In the 2018.
Oh, that's excellent, thank you. If you could identify those five pages for me even, then I might even be able to get those read, yes.
Start on, on page 15 of the document, page 26 of the PDF. So that will get you exactly where you need to go. And really what it's talking about is, when, when I answered this question earlier, when we first started, the, the discussion question, you'd asked me, what's going on with Newtown? Well, because it was built out from greenfield development as an iterative process, there's all these iterative process steps built in to how development has to proceed forward. But now that it's built, now that there's existing infrastructure in place and existing buildings, we're really starting at like point D in that process, but you still have to go through the process of A, B, C, even though nothing is changing there. So what happens is you spend a lot more time just kind of going through unnecessary process steps. And for development, time is money. And so all of the money that they put into going through those unnecessary processes-
Example, please.
Sure. So for example, like, you're making a small change to a specific use in an area.
Such as? A business?
Yeah.
We're built out, I guess, at least my understanding is, in terms of residences. So I'm trying to understand what it is that you, that, what it is that this means about investment.
I think, I mean, would a resident who wants to do an exterior change to their property, but then they would be going into a setback, and then they have to, but it is Newtown, so you have to go to the planning board.
Right.
You have to go through all these steps just to make a change that if you were in R12, you wouldn't have to do as a resident.
It, it's also a matter of, like, the way that the Newtown zoning regs were written are different than a lot of the other zoning districts that are in the county, which is, sometimes was by design to try to achieve a different goal and outcome.
Right.
But Newtown zoning is also incredibly referential of all the other zoning districts. For example, if you pull up one of the FDPs, one of the 268 FDPs, it will say, this is an employment center area. And it will say, these are the three uses we think are employment center. Oh, and also, any uses that are allowed in the B1, B2 district.
We are very familiar with that.
Yeah, exactly. And so then you have this process where you're going, well, the B1 and the B2, those get updated, those get updated as opposed to comprehensive planning and text amendments. And so now you have potentially unintended consequences affecting Newtown zoning because there were changes made to other zoning districts. And if you're administering the 268, we're, it's very difficult for, for us as administrators to go back through every single one of those FDPs and say, how does this amendment to this one district in this small area that was intended only to change this affect all these other areas in a way that's not like beneficial to achieving the goals that we have for Newtown zoning? So that is what we're talking about, where it's inefficient, it's hard to administer, and it's not getting us design outcomes that we want to see in the Newtown zoning district. So that is my primary example for what needs to get updated in the Newtown zoning regs. And then we have, for instance, the Hoco by Design says, we want to continue to preserve all the open space areas in, in the Columbia area and throughout the county. Does it make sense to, instead of having those be part of Newtown zoning, actually establish those as a separate, like, distinction within the zoning regs so that they're maintained and preserved the way that we want them to be? For the existing low and moderate residential neighborhoods, their FDPs, that the only thing that was built in them is low and moderate residential density. Would it make sense to zone those low and moderate residential density instead of having a Newtown zoning framework and an FDP where the people who are living in those areas have a very different process for building decks, making adjustments to the land than anyone else who lives in the county does because they live in Newtown zoning, even though they have the exact same building form as other residential districts in the county? And if you go into the Development Assessment Regulations-
Okay, let me just stop you for a minute because that, I think, I think one of the examples you gave was a really good example. And I just want to follow up with some, a little bit of detail here, and that was the open space, because people in Columbia are very concerned that this general plan is going to impact on the percentage, 36% of open space that's required in Columbia under the original plan. And I can understand why they might be concerned. So that, I think people feel there's reverential protection of that percentage in Columbia under our present zoning. And I am wondering how, if this were to be incorporated under a larger zoning package and somehow it was just called open space, how that protection would further, because that protection right now is based on a percentage of what's developed. And I can see that maybe the open space would continue to, to exist as it has now been identified, but would it be protected as a percentage of what's being developed? That's what's so important and creates the feel of Columbia.
Yeah, so I, you're going to hate this answer, but I don't want to completely say yes.
I am going to hate it, Jessica.
No, because, because-
I'm going to hate it.
I'm not a legislative body. I don't get to decide that. What I do is I can say, the Hoco by Design Plan calls for the preservation of our open space in Columbia as it exists today and the percentage quantities that it exists today. And then it says, enhance it, add more, make more connections. And then also Newtown zoning, as you know, there's a very big distinction between the credited open space that counts towards the 36% and the uncredited open space, and then the form that that open space takes. You know, Newtown zoning, it's one of the few areas where its open space is defined differently than a lot of the other districts in the county because it's achieving different needs.
That's right.
Does it make sense for that model to continue, or do we want to create this different design guidance for a recreational amenity that serves the community and counts as credited open space versus our truly wooded natural areas? They're achieving different goals, they're all grouped together right now, do we want to make sure that we're differentiating those moving forward into the zoning regs? That's what we have to consider as we move forward towards implementation, but the plan says, no net loss of that.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Youngman?
There's a reference in the plan to an agricultural assessment. What do you, what do we mean by that? Like, it stops short of a, sort of an agriculture master plan. What's, what do you-
Yeah, I'm pretty sure you're referring to the agricultural assessment. It was one of the five or six baseline assessments that we did at the beginning of this particular planning process. So we hired a subconsultant through, CEI retained a subconsultant to do an agricultural assessment.
I'm sorry.
Oh.
I, I, I mis, I misread my notes. I thought it was calling for something to be done in the future. Has there been any discussion of one of the things the general plan calls for is to do an agriculture master plan? I think it's come up a couple of times in council meetings when we've looked at easement purchases and the like.
Yeah, I recall us having that discussion throughout the process. We talked more about the future of agriculture as part of our economy in the Economic Prosperity Chapter. So I'd really have to dig in there to see if we have that specific recommendation.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't see it.
Right.
Actually, in the plan, I just didn't know if it had been talked about. If you guys think it's a good idea to do.
Yeah. Well, we're going to have James Zoller here, he's going to join us when we have our Economic Prosperity Work session, so that might be a good question to bring up with him.
Okay, great, thanks.
Ms. Walsh?
One of the reasons that we heard about this morning, why we would consider revising the Newtown Center, Newtown Center regulations, is because the form of ownership has, has changed over time. But the reality is that the, who owns and the number of entities who own what remains to be developed still is quite limited, is it not?
In our major downtown area, that's the same, as well as the, the regional gateway, it's, it's still distributed over, I think, five major players. But mostly, it's all of the small commercial and employment center areas. Those have a lot of different owners. And so those are the areas where it, they, it needs some, some change in how, and how the code is administered to those. For instance, you can have a, a small warehouse or just kind of a flex space owner where it's different ownership, it's not one of the major players, it's not the original developer, but they can't propose any changes to their site unless the original developer signs off on that process and actually submits a petition on their behalf. So there's inequity in how private property owners can engage with the county based on the existing framework for the Newtown zoning regs.
Okay, but that seems to be like this example about, I want to change the facade and have like a different setback than would be required in Owen Brown, you know, whatever, that that really isn't the thing that should be dictating how we treat something like a lakefront development or even a gateway. Like, those are, to me, even within Newtown Center, like, if that's what you're saying, that we're, there, like, there's a smaller chain or a smaller location of retail within Newtown Center that we're trying to accommodate?
I'm thinking more along like the, so we have those mixed-use activity centers identified along the Snowden River Parkway corridor and the Dobbin Road area and a lot of kind of our Columbia Gateway overlook areas. Those have a bunch of different owners in those areas. And that is, so we can't achieve the desirable growth targets that we have in Hoco by Design if we don't reevaluate the Newtown zoning district regulations and how those are being applied.
Is Snowden Parkway Newtown zoning?
There are elements of it that are Newtown zoning. As we move east into Gateway, we actually get into different kinds of zoning. It's very Swiss cheesy, as you know.
Right, I agree. And so I, I think we're talking in oversimplified terms. I, you know, you have the slide and you mentioned it again, this, or you had the slide today in your presentation, it's in a bigger form in here about this concept of redeveloping the suburban shopping centers. Again, we're not talking about 50,000 different owners, whether we're in one of the Village Centers or even if we're at, for example, Long Gate or, or Long Gate, whatever it's called, there's only, right, a handful of commercial entities that own these properties. What is their buy-in to this notion of big box is dead, surface parking lots are, you know, out? You know, I see reference to stakeholders, but we never name names, right? I mean, in this case, it's Kimco, if I'm talking about Long Gate or the Village Centers, it's Howard Hughes if I'm talking about Lakefront. What, what is their specific reaction and what, you know, is this document what they want?
Hey, Jason? Did you want to, yeah, I think I might-
Oh, Jason, did you hear my question?
More so, I know you could speak from the perspective of the various conversations you've had with both Gateway business owners and property owners, and I just want to, you know, make a distinction between those and what they've been saying about this document and some of the redevelopment plans for these areas.
Okay, wait, but I think it's even more simple than that, is that we're talking about all these owners, all, there's not a lot of owners if we're talking about these- about all these owners, there's not a lot of owners if we're talking about these five or six areas that we want to redevelop or revision or whatever. It's these suburban shopping centers, that's what we call them in this proposed document. It's Gateway, it's, I think, some portion of Newtown Development or the Lakefront stuff, but I think we all know what that is, right? That's already there. So the Village Centers that haven't yet been developed, maybe Wild Lake, again, these are really not, there's not 10,000 players out there. There's like, tell me, David, six stakeholders? Like, I don't, I mean, it's not a lot of people. So I'd like to know, for those six stakeholders, whether we're talking about Longgate up in my district or Gateway over, you know, at the end of Snowden or anything in between, what do those five or six stakeholders say about this kind of concept and what that's gonna look like implementation over the next 10 years if we adopt this?
Sure. And thanks for letting me be here. I can speak...
You might want to introduce yourself.
Okay, I'm Jason Janati, I'm still new at this. Jason Janati with Howard County EDA Economic Development Authority. I can speak more specifically to Gateway and then kind of expand beyond that. But for Gateway, they have the Gateway Association, which is kind of like their grouping of all the owners. There's over a dozen different property owners in that grouping. There's certainly three major owners, which is, you know, Kopp, Abrams, and Howard Hughes. But there's dozens of, I mean, more than a dozen other owners that are all kind of part of that group that, and that's part A is, you know, how many? I can get you the exact number, we have the list and the ratios of how much they own and their voting rights, et cetera. But generally what the business owners who either lease or also own, there's probably fewer that own space and operate businesses, that a lot of the business owners there are leasing space from the said owners. A lot of what they're saying is, they're looking to add, they need workforce. And the biggest challenge they've shared with me, we've interviewed two dozen of the business owners in the group or in the district, their two biggest challenges, two most consistent themes are, they don't have housing options for their entry-level workers that are kind of coming here, they're new to the area, so a lot of them are needing to live in Queen Anne's County, they're living in Frederick and they're commuting in for the time that they come in. The other thing that they've said is, they really need more amenities for the employees to do when they are here. So when they're trying to attract workforce and they show them Gateway, it's kind of like, okay, what's going on here? Why would I want to bring my talent to this area versus, you know, other major cities? You know, I think sometimes we lose fact that it's not like Gateway versus downtown Columbia, because I think a healthy Columbia is good for Gateway and vice versa. But they're comparing this to Philly, you know, other, Nashville, all these other major areas of options for where they're working. And so when they come to Gateway, what the business owners are saying is, they need to share more amenities for people to get out and about and mingle kind of beyond just the workday. So housing and the amenities have really been the two consistent themes we've heard from the owners, business owners, that is.
Okay. I would, I mean, I know, at least I personally would very much appreciate some breakdown of the ownership entities and the percentages.
Sure.
Because again, I think having those, you know, the 10 much lesser ownership entities making a number be much larger when three entities really own 95% of the property. I mean, I think that's the same way it is at Lakefront. We're not talking about 56 or 10,000 disparate like entities. But again, my presumption, just based on how I've seen this process play out and what it says, is that for those five or six majority shareholders, vast majority shareholders, stakeholders, whatever you call them in this document, that this is what they would agree to, that this is what they would want. I mean, we've seen it in zoning board proposals, for example, that they don't want a big box store, they want so-called mixed development. I see the reference to, you know, 50% isn't workable in economic prosperity section for Route 1, like, but is that a fair assumption that these five or six or whatever the number is, I don't really care, show me the document that tells me what the number is and I'll use the right one next time? But is that, this document reflects what they, those five or six see having, happening at their properties?
So this document, I think, what it's intended to reflect is a vision that the entire community shares, and we try to strike a balance between a multitude of interests, right?
Okay, but I gotta stop you there, Ms. Kendall. Longgate is mine, I'm always gonna come back to it. I do not know a single person in my 50, 60,000 big District 1. No one has ever called to me and said, hey, Liz, you know what I want instead of a Barnes and Noble and a Safeway? Is a bunch of apartments across the street from some apartments built right up onto 103 with a wall next to it? Like, no one has said that. No one has said that. So you talk about stakeholders, but I am telling you, you are not talking to my stakeholders, the one that matter to me and who call me. So that's why I'm trying to understand is, who are the stakeholders whose interests are being represented here? And is it a fair assumption on my part that, yes, those guys, they're taken care of, this is gangbusters? Because if there's not even a consensus that this is what they want, then I have my own, right, I have my own constituents who have concerns about the flexibility of what is being described here and the impact it has and compatibility, right? Because another problem I have with compatibility is it's a race to the bottom, is the worst design element of the surrounding neighborhood then becomes the norm. So for example, for concrete specific example at Longgate, building right up to a sidewalk and then now to be expanded commuter route is bordered by a wall. Like, that's not community building, that's not place making, but I know for certain if someone wants to put something across the street at the Longgate Mall, that they're gonna say, to be compatible with my neighbors across the street, I'm gonna pave the entirety of this lot and put a wall up along a sidewalk. And guess what's on the other side of that wall? A YMCA? An elementary school? Like, this, I just, back to my original question, my assumption is, tell me if I'm wrong, the five or six major stakeholders who own some of the vast majority of these commercial shopping centers that seem to be the focus of this general plan, whether in Newtown, Columbia, at Gateway, or at some, and that's the follow-up question to this, is where do I show my constituents? Hey, you guys, y'all really want, you want to see Longgate, whatever. I get that it's Longgate, but where else? Where's the map that says, here are the, here are those shopping centers? Is it Normandy? I don't think so, those guys just spent a lot of money making a really beautiful space. Like, that's like one of my proudest places right now, but is that like a tenure plan? And also at Normandy, we should be expecting a kind of revamping and a, there's no, A, my real question is, and I would like, if not here, is, are these guys, who are these guys? And are they, is this, they're bought into this, so I don't have to worry about whether this reflects what they want? Because that's my assumption. Is that assumption right? But B, where are these locations? Again, I understand Gateway, but where is the map? I don't think it's this on the slide, you know, where you show it. I definitely, as you know, don't think it's across the street from the Elkridge Library. But where are these shopping centers? Is it any shopping center? Is there a map that shows where these shopping centers is? Is it an ownership thing? Like, how do I know, okay, in the next 10 years if this plan is to be adopted, these X number of shopping centers in these X number of locations owned by these five entities is likely to be, you know, something very different in 10 years? Like, how, where is that? How do I know what that answer is?
So first, the activity centers and the identification of those activity centers, which includes, I believe it's called Longgate Overlook, those were all identified through our planning advisory committee. So it was a combination of identifying areas that were already identified in Plan Howard 2030, and then there were a couple of areas such as Longgate Overlook that were included now and added to Hoco by Design as another area that we could see opportunities for significant redevelopment. A lot of the guidance that, you know, came from that, like I said, it was Planning Advisory Committee members who are representative of various stakeholders here in the county, but also recommendations that came from our consultant team and looking at future opportunities, how many jurisdictions are trying to create opportunities to redevelop this big box retail because our future of retail is yet still kind of too, it's still to be determined, right? It's evolving, the future of retail is evolving. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I think the difficulty is, you know, general plan, long-range, high-level document. We're not making decisions or policies in this based on current owner of this particular area really wants this. What we're saying is, these are the kinds of places we want to have, and this is where we think that they should go. So that's the future land use map. Like, that's really the guiding document that says, these are the different place types, this is generally where we think they're gonna apply. When we get into compre zoning, you pull down from that and you actually start making it more parcel-specific, and you start having the like, what are the specific zones that we're gonna have there? And so that's kind of where it's general. And then also like, ownership changes constantly. What we're trying to do is set up the, this is the vision, this is what we want, this is where we think it should go based on the existing elements that are out in the community today, what we're seeing and changes in the market forces that shape our places. And so an owner could decide, I like what I have, everything's working for me, the economics, they work. I'm gonna stay exactly as I am despite any changes in the regulatory environment. Or they'll say, actually, yeah, the economics aren't working for me anymore, but I'm not interested in doing what you put in your plan. I think I'm gonna sell to someone who is interested in pursuing that model, so the ownerships could change. What we want to ensure that is, what we say we want is defined in our regs and that it's ready to go to receive it and direct that growth in the way that we want it to be and that we're setting up the character-based tools that we talked about in our code elements. We're not gonna say, you tell us what's compatible with this area, I'm gonna build this wall. We're gonna say, this is what our public realm should look like. This is the best practices that make up the public realm. This is how we're gonna define these design elements, you need to adhere to this. So that's how those design elements are gonna happen moving forward.
One, just to give you a data point I found, I was looking on Gateway, and just as of the latest list that I got from the Gateway Association, there's 18 different property owners outside of Mickey Abrams, Kopp, Howard Hughes, and CA. And, you know, I totally agree that the big three, we'll call them, you know, kind of control a lot of land, but, you know, for one example, Oracle is one of the owners. So while they don't own a lot of different buildings, they have a huge footprint and presence, so I just want to give you the context on how many owners are there.
Okay, that's helpful. I guess, I guess I'm wrong, and certainly Councilmember Young has a more succinct way of putting it, but one of my big takeaways from this plan that we've now spent Howard M&amp;M Work Section's talking about is that it, the one of the driving principles is you say it, identifying and revisioning these suburban shopping centers. And, right, I mean, am I wrong? That is what this plan says, and that is carried throughout each of whatever chapter we're discussing on any given day. I am, I am very curious still, again, and I guess if you don't tell me, I'm just going to continue to assume, that the stakeholders that exist now and are largely, you know, I can name them, I'm sure Mr. Young will name, you know, the two I would leave out, that those ownership entities now agree that this would be a good use of it. But what do I tell my Route 40 residents is, is the Enchanted Forest Shopping Center, you know, subject to the same treatment that a Longgate Shopping Center would be or a Chatham Shopping Center would be or a Normandy? Like, does this mean that any, you know, what is the criteria that you just called a suburban shopping center? And so now all of a sudden, all of these tenants that are reflected in each of these chapters applies? That's the part I want to know is, and, you know, one of the very early work sessions, you put up that activity center and, you know, we think this is where it should be in South Elkridge. Where is the map that shows, these are the kinds of shopping centers on a county-by-basis that represent these tenants that we're describing in each of these chapters? Again, this is the, for example. For example, it definitely is Longgate, I'm hearing, I'm seeing, I'm convinced. But I'm not sure it's Normandy, but I couldn't tell you why, other than just recent investment. I'm not sure if it's Enchanted Forest, but I couldn't tell you why. Like, that, that is again, like, what are we doing here? Like, how do I describe what I've spent hours and hours of my, you know, spring and now summer doing if I can't even answer a definitive question about what I think is one of the central, you know, ideas of this? And, you know, I got this length of Route 40 and I don't know. Maybe all, maybe none. But that, I just, I keep looking, you know, and I think, I always will blame it on myself, oh, I just missed that page. But I don't, I looked again this time, I don't see the page that says, these are those kinds of suburban shopping centers that we think are outdated and that should be, your words, identified and, you know, transformed or revisioned. I don't remember the second word, but you say it over and over again, identify them. Okay, identify them to us, or give us at least two or three concrete examples scattered across our county, maybe not D5.
Do you want to pull up the activity center map? The future land use map identifies all these various types of activity centers that we mentioned. If you want to, I can walk you through the future, where's the activity center map? So, we're gonna just pull up the activity center map to kind of walk you through it.
Are you gonna put it on the screen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Just gonna wait for the visual aid. There it is, that one. Yeah, so this is, I think we even labeled them, right? We put names on the map here. Lean this way. So as you can see in the Route 40 corridor, for example, that is the, the Enchanted Forest Shopping Center is a future activity center. The Chatham Station Shopping Center is one, thank you, Chatham. The Normandy Shopping Center is another. And then when you go to the Route 100 corridor, it's the Longgate Shopping Center and the Meadow Ridge and Lindwood Shopping Center. And then there are the Village Centers that are in Columbia, that's identified as an activity center. Of course, as we know, Wild Lake has already been redeveloped, but this activity centers are intended to identify places that either have already transformed or are planned for transformation. Downtown Columbia, an activity center that is in transformation. Gateway, the Snowden-Dobbin area. And then you can see the activity centers identified along the Route 1 corridor, which we'll have, we'll dig into those when we get into the economic prosperity chapter. So my understanding of your question was, where are these activity centers? And this is where they are.
Where in the general plan is that?
So, yeah, so this map specifically, we did not include it, it was not necessarily, it wasn't intentionally excluded. It would have been a great document to have added into the plan just to more clearly see where activity centers are and have them labeled. But the future land use map here, if you were to overlay that activity center map on this future land use map, the boundaries are the same. So all of these different types of activity centers are identified on the future land use map, which is in the plan.
Okay, so if something like this were incorporated into the general plan, and I firmly and strongly believe that it should be, if DPC doesn't support that amendment, I will be. But does that mean then this is, and we're not locking in, but this is, these, however, Village Centers plus Longgate plus the three on Route 40, this would be illustrating, not defining or exclusively, you know, listing these kinds of areas where we would expect this kind of identifying and transforming suburban shopping centers to happen?
Yes.
Okay. And so then that's a relatively finite set of documents, so we can figure out ownership and that kind of thing.
Well, a lot of, once we get into the comprehensive rezoning, that's when we would start to apply these character areas to the parcel level. And that is also a time where we would very directly engage those property owners if there is a rezoning about to occur.
Okay. Okay, I got it.
And that's a good suggestion, by the way, with regards to incorporating that map.
Just to follow up on the map, a flume with the activity center dots overlaid would also be great.
The circle?
The cir, yeah. Well, the, if, I guess in the old general plan, you know the stars? And I'm not asking for the stars because I think it's funny, like, is that the boundary of the Village Center? But to have those marked on the flume and identified on the flume, so while they're areas to transform, you can see exactly where those activity centers, those proposed activity centers are.
So I think what we're hearing is, you guys would like a few more pages added around the future?
We would like more.
More pages.
And then I will, so I was just going through on the interactive map, which is not perfect, and, you know, there are some confusing situations where, you know, there's a trust that owns the parcel and you can't quite tell, but it looks like at Longgate, Kimco owns sort of the three main parcels, and then there's the L around it, which there's different property ownership there. There's 12 different owners if you count the business condos at Owen Brown, there's four property owners at Harper's Choice, there's 10 owners at Oakland Mills, which is why nothing ever happens. And then Mr. Janati, you might be able to correct me here, but it looks like there's almost seven at Longreach?
That sounds accurate.
Okay. So it's, you would know.
You would know.
Too well.
So it's, I don't know, at least on the east, you know, when I'm looking at, Kimco owns most of Kings Contrivance, but not all of the Kings Contrivance Village Center. But they have come and said they have no plans to do anything anytime soon, but who knows 20 years from now? So the question that, I kind of go back to these, the next steps of the pattern books and context-sensitive, and again, this one might be for Mr. Nooncaster, but I guess one of the things that I'm concerned about when I look out on the horizon is if we are restricting growth and restricting... and restricting infill. What exists to prevent us from sort of having a Chevy Chase effect in our communities, where we at some point will tip over the balance of the land value versus the value of the home over it? There may be individuals who would want to come in and have a home that, you know, is perhaps, one of the things that's happened in Chevy Chase is that you have older, smaller homes, and then they sort of tear it down and build right up to the lot lines. And, and that's a real concern of mine, because we have some of these, you know, older, older neighborhoods, smaller parcels, smaller homes. Some of them, you know, are, are built with, I don't even know the materials, but they're from like the 70s, the T-70 siding and, yeah, not to give you any flashbacks or anything. But, you know, so that's my concern, is how, how do we develop these context sensitive guidelines where we allow for some infill, but we don't, we don't end up completely transforming the, the vibe of the neighborhoods?
Yeah, so it's really, as the policies say, it's about making sure that our regulatory guidance identifies the vibe, and then also identifies, you know, going back to what Ms. Walsh said, is this a vibe we want to continue? Like, do, is this something we want to see forward? Does it achieve the goals that we want? So it's really about identification, a value judgment, that's part of the community process, looking at also the, kind of the economic realities that, that are putting pressure on these areas. Because you can, you can create a wonderful pattern book and says, this is exactly what we want, this is what we want you to build. And if it's not based in a reality of what the market can drive or what it wants to, to purchase, then we're not going to achieve that either. So we, we kind of stall out. So it's kind of a combination of factors that go into actually identifying, this is what makes sense. And so if you're worried about, hey, these are kind of smaller buildings that are setback from the street, and they kind of have a little bit setbacks from each other, that's something you can codify in your design regs. So that you can say, yes, you can do infill, but maybe you want to do it by kind of expanding backwards into your lot, so that when you're in the public realm, or you're a neighbor, you're not experiencing that disruption in the same way you'd be if we, like, we're going to tear it down and we're going to increase by like five times size, kind of thing. And that, that diagram that we showed, and that's in the plan, shows the difference of what you can do with that.
I guess the other, so in the, in the chapter, it does talk about, it might be the other chapter, but in, in the plan, it talks about pilots. And I think having sort of wrestled with cottage community regulations and reading them from different places and seeing how they work or don't work really with the other infill regulations between use setbacks and structure setbacks, and essentially what can happen is you can write these regulations and the product that is built is not like anything. It's like I gave a recipe to my child, and then, you know, they fulfilled that in their own interpretation, and it came out very different. And so I guess I'm just wondering, what I took away from that experience of wrestling with the cottage community is that perhaps for some of these newer things, it might be better to have more of a piloted approach, where you have that flexibility, you have that guidance, DPC is more walking people hand in hand to get what we really want, so we can see it and understand it, and other people who may want to be inspired for future things can see it and understand what we're, what we're going for.
Yeah. So specific to, and this is in the dynamic neighborhoods chapter, so specific to, say, more diverse housing types, messy middle housing types, cottage clusters, there's a recommendation that we should consider launching a demonstration project, right? So whereas we, the county, would partner with maybe a nonprofit housing developer, housing commission, something along those lines, to launch a pilot project to show how it can be done, to walk a project through all of the regulations, to tweak any fixes that might need to be fixed. So absolutely, that is a piece of it. There's other considerations for actually designing pre-approved site plans of some sort for some of these housing types that might be an incentive as well. So there's a variety of those kind of recommendations to explore once we get into the next chapter, which I know we're all looking forward to.
So excited, can't wait. No, I, I appreciate that, because it's really, how do we make sure it's, it's, the example is what we want? And, and I appreciate that, so thank you.
I, I just want to say, and we're very fortunate that there's a lot of other communities that have already kind of thrown themselves against the rocks to kind of truth test this, and so we're going to learn from their examples. And that's why you bring on consultants, and that's why you have professional planning staff, who kind of are aware of all those, and we're going to take the lessons learned from all of those and apply them here. So that's, that's really where the rubber meets the road. I am, every time I talk to you guys, I'm so excited about the next few years, because that's where we get to actually work on implementations, so.
Yeah, I mean, and that's what really came out of the, the conversations I had around cottage communities, was that you really want to have people who know it and get it versus someone who reads it and then is trying to get there in their own mind, but.
And then, and then another thing I'll also say is that here, we are fortunate that here in Howard County, we have examples for almost all of these kind of housing forms. So it's just that they are so well-integrated into the fabrics of our community, people aren't even aware that they exist and what they're called. So it's really about identifying those and saying, hey, we've done this before, do we want to continue doing it exactly that way? Because it seemed to have worked, so.
And I appreciate, and I also appreciate the concept of having those pre, pre-approved site plans, because the more that we can empower our residents and homeowners to, to do their change, like the changes that they want to their property, I think that that really inspires that local investment for people who are going to be here for the long term. So, thank you. Ms. Young?
Did we skip Mr. Youngman?
Oh, no, we skipped, we skipped Dr. Jones, because he had to stop off for a minute. So we are coming sort of to the end of the time we had for quality by design, but I would imagine that this will take more time than focus areas. So maybe we'll do one last round on this, and then shift into focus areas, and if there's time at the end, come back to quality by design.
Or a five-minute break.
Oh. Let's take a five-minute break.
A five-minute break is fine.
All right. Oh, wait, lunch is at noon, yes.
Okay, can we, can we do that?
Yes, let's do that.
All right. Okay, I do want to point out, again, because there's, this is such an incredible focus on our nine Village Centers, of which five of them are in my district, but I guess one has been developed, one doesn't have a Village Center, one has been, has gone through the process, one other is, has multiple owners, Harper's Choice, and then the fifth one is River Hill. So in light of that information, I do want to point out that so far, the stakeholders, which are the people who live in the community, have in the hundreds come out to oppose these redevelopments of these Village Activity Centers. Wild Lake took five years, and the reason why it took five years is because of the amount of opposition. Most of the work done to get the, the members of the Wild Lake Village, the residents of the Wild Lake Village, to the extent that it was ever done onboard, was done prior to the case actually coming to the Village Board. So there was almost five years of, of working with the developer to make concessions prior to the Wild Lake Village redevelopment coming to the zoning board, so that it, I guess, would be less contentious. Everybody knows in this room to a certain extent, those of you who aren't new anyway, know about the Hickory Ridge Village redevelopment, which is ongoing, because it has been appealed for the second time. And I think that the people who, the zoning board members who are here in this room would tell you, yes, it was extremely contentious. These, so to say that stakeholders want this, simply, and I think that was the point of Ms. Walsh's question, who are the stakeholders? Does Kimco want this? And actually, I am curious, did anybody in this group, and I guess, I don't think it would be you, Ms. Bella, because you haven't been here long enough, but I guess of the people who are here, Kimco hasn't come in and testified, or any of the other owners of the Village Centers that I, that I've seen, that I know of. Did you guys have private meetings with them? Were they in the room at some place that we weren't aware of? Were they on any of the, the various advisory groups that you all put together? Where, where was, did, did they just not have any input or discussions with the county that was, that we saw?
Right. So no, they weren't a part of any of our, of any of our advisory groups that we formed. They may have submitted comments through the public process, through the same portal that every other member of the public provided, because we weren't always asking those who are providing comments to leave a name. So they may have still submitted comments through the process, but we didn't have any intentional scheduled meetings with them to discuss.
Okay. So just, just heads up to everybody, DPC, whoever ends up sitting as the District Four representative, this is not going to be a pleasant process going forward.
And I just want to say that the Village Centers were, I mean, they've been identified for redevelopment even since Plan Howard 2030. So from the perspective of carrying these forward, so this has just been the similar, similar vision as to what's already been established in Plan Howard 2030. So it's just being carried forward.
I'm, I'm well aware of that.
Okay.
Otherwise, we wouldn't be having, we wouldn't be so familiar with, with this process. Yeah, so, well aware, yeah. Then I just had a couple more small questions. One, and actually, this is for you specifically, Jessica, because I heard you testify about it, and I really appreciated your testimony. And that was, well, you didn't testify about it, you asked a question at a pre-submission meeting with Howard Hughes. And they were talking about building the Medical Arts Building. And I don't know that the jug handle piece had come in yet, but you had a very clear vision about how this wanting to ensure that Howard Hughes was creating appropriate walkability. And, and I thought to myself at the time, yes, make sure that it's there. And I'm wondering, given that this plan also talks about walkability in Columbia, particularly in the downtown area, do you have any feeling at all about how this jug handle might impact walkability from that area of downtown Columbia to the rest of downtown Columbia, particularly the lakefront area, now that that's the next piece to be developed?
So you're, you're referencing the jug handle that's connecting from the Merryweather District over to Broken Land Parkway, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So my understanding is that that has been conceptualized in the transportation network framework of the downtown Columbia plan from the original block plan that's included and adopted in that plan. And it is designed really more as a vehicle ingress and egress, and to kind of have some redundancy in the system, so that the transportation network is not always having to go to Warfield and LLP and Broken Land, providing more ins and outs. So when, when you move from the Merryweather District, where it connects in, up to the actual Broken Land Parkway, I haven't looked at the specific designs, that's really a vehicles focus, but the Office of Transportation and our division would be evaluating that for assessment with the complete streets policy to ensure.
Great. And I, I hope that you, because I trust your judgment on this. I think you probably have a better feel for the downtown Columbia plan and walkability than anybody else. I, I hope that at some point you do look at that and maybe get back to us on.
I'll just say that there are so many people who have been involved in downtown, who've been there in it, in the weeds on it a lot longer than I, I think, I think there's a really great team here at DPC for kind of reviewing those, and a lot of experts. But I do want to finish my answer just real quick, is also say, there are also a lot of other multi-use pathways and other multimodal transportation opportunities that are being built and constructed in that area, that, that are going to ensure that we have those multimodal, multimodal connections as part of that jug handle, so.
That would be good. I, I am a little, I do just also want to point out that we have a transportation demand management plan. And one of the reasons for putting that plan in was to try and cut down on the number of new roads that we needed, and here we are with the jug handle. So I don't know what the transportation management demand plan is actually doing to cut back on the number of vehicles that are being used. And I think it would be really, really useful at some point, since we talk over and over and over and over again in this plan about how this will be live, walk, play, work. And is that happening in downtown Columbia? Are people living, walking, playing, and working in downtown Columbia? We've got a jug handle that tells me that's not happening. And I'm wondering, can we actually, is there really going to be an opportunity for people to get out of their cars? That's another thing that we see throughout this plan. Not that I don't want it. I certainly agree with my colleague that we need to get out of our cars, but I don't see that happening in Howard County, or even in these small Village Centers. There's not enough retail, there's not enough office, there, people don't want to build office retail right now, that's not, that, and that, if anything's going to go away, I think the office retail will go away before some of the other things because of the, the changes that people made during COVID. And I, I'm very concerned about, well, we don't, shouldn't have as much parking. I think we're going to need just as much parking, even if we're putting all these apartment buildings and town homes in a parking lot of a shopping center. I think we'll need just as much parking as ever. I'm concerned that we would think that we want to get rid of some of the bigger retail in some of these shopping centers. People will not be happy if we get rid of the Target. That will not be hap, they, I know that you purposefully did not draw it to make it look like the Target, I know, but as I'm looking at that, I'm thinking, oh, that could be the Target in Long Gate.
So, so let me just say, we don't pick winners and losers in terms of like, yes, Target, no Walmart, yes.
I know, I know you're not.
What we're doing is we're setting up the framework of, if you redevelop this area, these are the enhancements to the public realm we want to see, this is the building form that it should take, and this is sort of the design parameters that we want to see moving forward. Like, that, that's what's being set up in those commercial offer centers. So it's not, you're not setting up, like, pushing out viable uses that make sense for achieving the goals that are outlined.
Well, I will say this, the visual, and I know that, you know, these are just examples again, but this is what people use, all right? This gets back to, oh, they're going to, this comes before us then, right? The zoning board. Oh, look at page, you know, the appendix, you know, page 42, the appendix. Oh, see how it's all disappeared? All the big retail disappeared in that parking lot? And now it's just all small retail, first floor, small retail? Because that is what the visual shows of the activity center. It starts off, one of the bigger ones, it starts off with a bunch of stores, and then it full, then it slowly all goes away. And now it's presumably first floor retail, which, given what happened on Route 1, I don't know that that will ever actually occur. And apartment buildings are townhomes in the parking lot. And so now it's just all residential with the alleged first floor retail. That's concerning to me.
Can I just jump in?
Yeah, I was going to say, Ms. Kendall, why don't you answer, and then we'll break for lunch and return.
And I, and I might also ask Matt Nooncaster to, to jump in. So just with regards to the future of big box retail, I mean, big box retail in other areas, sometimes they have to conform to whatever the regulations are if they want to be in a place. Here, the market demand for some of those needs are strong, and there are places where big box retail has been able to fit into a smaller format or a two-story structure that still has the same amount of square footage. And I've even seen big box retail in other places that has coexisted with, with housing opportunities, specifically in Kansas City, I've seen a Walmart do that.
Well, actually, in DC, Target's got a two-story.
That's right.
Yeah, there, yes.
Pennine City.
Yeah, right, yes.
That's right. So this isn't telling them to go away, this is just saying, well, when there's a future for redevelopment, and again, we're not choosing the winners or the losers, but there are opportunities to negotiate for these big box retails to fit into a different form, so we can get all of these other elements that we want to see here, such as walkability, such as public realm, such as stormwater management, and all the other aspects that benefits that come from redevelopment, while still having those retail establishments we want to see.
And I can't help but chime in and just say, like, it's a phase development, it could stop at any point along that phase. It could stop at any point along that phase because it's really the private owners who get to decide. I've achieved what I want to achieve and I've done it under the existing, the regulatory framework that was set up, so.
All right, we'll break for lunch and we'll return at 12:30. I know, it keeps making me fix my posture.
My best side.
All right. So why don't we shift into focus areas and then any remainder of time after focus areas, we'll just go back to quality by design. Does that work for folks? All right.
I'll, I'll, I'll pass because my last question was on that part, so.
Okay, well.
I'm going to come back around if you want.
Let's see, do I have, well, no, it'd be Ms. Walsh next.
I was kind of intermixing, honestly.
Any for focus areas?
Before I pass off, I, I think, I think we all had the same kind of question. And I had, I had actually texted or emailed staff when we first started talking about, like, it's one of the takeaways from this morning that, that the little color-coded boxes that are the activity centers. There was the blow up that showed like Chatham, Normandy and Enchanted Forest, but then the activity centers are a little bit bigger and they're kind of along the road to identify what those parcels are.
So they're.
Yes, no?
They're all activity centers? It's just that they're different types of activity centers?
Right, but the activity centers are bigger than just those three properties. Yeah, like I get the three properties, but like you have activity centers that sit like south of 40, between 40 and Frederick Road. And they're various properties. You can't really tell from the plume.
Right, right, so you're, you're trying to ask, so for example, one of the activity centers we have identified as the, you know, Enchanted Forest Shopping Center. And is the question, does the character area for that particular activity center extend outside of just the shopping center itself?
That could be the question. Let me just make sure that I don't ask the wrong, ask it the wrong way. Because you've got, you know, this whole lot of different activity centers. So I guess, I guess those you're calling regional activity centers on the plume because they're brown. They're specific parcels. And then you've got pink, which are village activity centers, or are they mixed use activity centers? I can't even really tell because the colors are so close.
Mr. Youngman, are you differentiating between like the multifamily neighborhoods and the mixed use neighborhoods versus the activity centers? Is that?
Maybe, maybe the pink is multifamily neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Or mixed use neighborhoods.
Are we sharing the map?
I just, we, we can figure out the key, but on the plume, it would be helpful if I can look at the plume and then I can look at GIS and I can say, okay, here are the seven properties that they're talking about that are now a mixed use neighborhood or a village activity center or whatever they are. Because I don't think they're just specific to those three shopping centers.
Yeah, so I know this is one that we've talked about in the past. So while our future land use map and these character areas, they are very specific. How they actually apply, to which parcels the character area specifically apply will become more specific once we get to the compri zoning. So the character areas at this point are just to generally help everyone understand what we envision the character to be in these areas, most of which represents what is already on the ground. They are fairly well-defined, but at this stage, at the future land use map stage, it's not meant to be interpreted at the parcel level. That will all be interpreted once we get to the zoning stage, when we determine what zoning districts match which character area.
I, I mean, that, that would make sense, however, if I look at it, and again, it's just, you know, it's this, this size. But, you know, they look, it looks like a specific line. It looks like you followed property lines. I don't, it's not just sort of a general area.
Yeah, I think that's more a result of the fact that most of the county is built out. So there are these kind of property boundaries that become one of the organizing features as we create a future land use map. But the purpose of a general plan is to say, these are the general areas. This is generally where we think they're going to be. But we don't want to do that parcel level decision-making at this point. Because as we said, you have a lot of questions about specifics. And that's going to be compri zoning. And so we're literally going to say, you know, rubber hits the road. This is specifically what we mean and this is specifically where it goes. And that's all part of compri zoning.
Like, for instance, it looks like there's a rectangle that's a multifamily neighborhood on St. John's Lane. Is that the church property?
So just to, I mean, we, we use real data that we have to develop.
Because there's no multifamily there now, it's church. There's like, there's no family anywhere, multifamily anywhere up and down that stretch of St. John's Lane.
Yeah, so to develop the future land use map, we use a combination of current land use because we have a very robust land use database and then also zoning. So we sort of married the two. I mean, I don't know if you.
So it could be designated that because of how it was zoned?
Could be, right, I mean, I don't know if you want us to.
No, 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 it's, I can, I can look at it myself, it's fine.
I just wanted to add, Sarah Latimer, who did the, the mapping work for us, she just noted that we followed right-of-way in the future land use map. So character is merged to road center lines.
Okay. I, I get that. I, I think it's, I don't think that that, I don't think that helps answer the question, though. You know, but I am, I am looking and I think that you're right. I think you're influenced on that particular one by zoning. Because, yeah, what's RSI? I've never even seen that zoning before. What zoning district is RSI? What's it stand for? Yeah. Multifamily neighborhood. Yeah. Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry, RSI is Residential Senior Institutional District.
So. So do I understand right that, you know, these guys might not even know we're doing a new general plan at this stage. You guys would have layered in that could be potentially multifamily because of the way it's zoned now. Okay, I got it.
All right, Ms. Walsh.
I will also continue to reside in the area of our county, in the immediate area of Route 40. Right, my last question's on that identifying transform suburban activity centers identifies three properties on Route 40. Enchanted Forest, Coming Westford, Chatham Station and Normandy. It doesn't identify Golden Triangle. It doesn't identify Pine Orchard further west. It doesn't identify Forest, whatever it's called, across the street from, from Enchanted Forest. Again, you, you say you're not picking winners and losers, but by identifying at least certain properties to be transformed from purely commercial zoning, which it is now, which is what you just told David is what caused the, you know, certain colors to appear and certain land uses to be designated on this plume, you, you are picking winners and losers. I mean, you use the specific example of Target and Walmart. You included Target at Long Gate Shopping Center, but you didn't include Walmart over by H Mart, where we actually do have one of the biggest rental housing, high-density uses, you know, outside of Columbia, which is that whole hard, what is it called? Normandy Crossing. So I, you know, again, I'm going to keep coming back to this because I cannot find, well, A, I couldn't find an identification at all. But now that I do see it and I have gotten, I think, an answer, these are 22 illustrative examples of where we foresee this. I don't know what is the common denominator here that would cause a Chatham on one side, but not a Golden Triangle down the street? Or more even closely, an Enchanted Forest on one side and a Forest on the other side. Forest, I don't even know what it's called, Forest Diner. But, I mean, we are picking winners and losers. I would imagine the value of those properties immediately increases the day after we say this is where we're going to target a much different, much more intense use of these properties versus a number of other similarly situated, even in the immediate vicinity, but across the county.
So my understanding of how, and Matt Nooncaster, if you're there, hopefully he's, he's back on time from, from lunch. Matt, are you there? Yes, excellent, thank you, Matt. Matt, so I just wanted to try to provide a little bit more of an explanation for how we take a future land use map identified by character areas, because I know you've done this in other jurisdictions. And then how does that translate once you get to the comprehensive rezoning? So while we are pretty specific with our character area boundaries, as you can see on the map, how does that apply when you get to compri zoning? I mean, is there a chance that some of these character areas will more clearly, again, these, these, the appropriate zoning districts for these characters will be identified through compri zoning? And at that stage, we generally look to see where we have these character areas on the future land use map and then we more clearly define where those parcels would, would be identified. Can you, can you just speak to how you've seen that happen? How you translate a future land use map into compri zoning? Thanks.
Yeah, and, you know, there, there are some variations on how you can do it, for sure. But generally speaking, each of the character areas that are on the future land use map would be like a family. And you'd want to stay within the family, but under compri zoning, you could have one or more zoning districts that implement that character district. And frankly, it happens a lot in the mixed use category. So all of those activity centers you have with transform, some of the communities we work in want to be very definitive about where the center might be and where the residential that supports the center might be. And so they will actually implement with the rezoning using a finer grain level of detail and have multiple zoning districts that roll up into the character area.
Isn't the concern, I, I think the concern, and I don't want to, I don't want to influence. I think the concern is, wow, if this was just sort of the general area, then we'd say, okay, this is the general area. Okay, great, that's, that's kind of the thousand or 30,000-foot general plan. But this isn't the general area. This actually follows property lines. So when it is time to do the map or it is time to do text revisions or whatever and rezone these properties, there's going to be people saying, well, that's in the general plan and that's not. The general plan called for that to be this and that to stay the way it is, or that not to be this. So if it's going to be general, it's got to be general. It can't, it can't look like specific parcels because then you're either you're in or you're out.
And to build on that, I would think you'd say, we have a Route 40 area. We have Creamway. It's X miles long. We would expect the best use of that would be X percentage residential across this spectrum of types of housing, this percentage of restaurant or walk-in use, this percentage of big box or grocery store. What, you know, however, you know, you smarty pants who do land design does it, but not this reactionary. This is what it is now. We could do some stuff outlined in these very linear, you know, like I said, you have picked winners and losers in my view on Route 40 already by virtue of this map and, and that slide we talked about before the lunch break. But that's, that would be what I would expect to see a general conceptual plan talk about. Is these are aspirational goals for a certain defined area in very general terms, you know? Obviously, it's going to have a cemetery on the one side of St. John's, like, that's going to be there. But, you know, to me, again, Creamway has a huge opportunity. I would have thought this, this is all about, how are we enhancing this, like, one-of-a-kind place? But it's not. It's like, you know, here are some property lines and we think that there could be mixed use there. So that, I mean, that's exactly what it is. Is this document, one of the things I can't reconcile is the hyper-specificity of having 22 identified locations in the immediate vicinity of a gazillion other, you know, locations that we don't identify and, and not have, I don't see the aspirational goal. I see a very, you know, you're not saying it's bi-parcel, but it looks, you know, on my tiny printout, it looks like parcels.
Yeah, so I, I think, I think these are all valid points. I think what the future land use map tried to do was take the growth model that was in Plan Howard 22, where it was like large blob. And there was a lot of feedback internally, as well as in the community of that didn't provide us enough detail on like, what do you mean? Where is that growth going? And it also led to challenges in implementation. You know, we, we go over to Route 1 and we say, hey, the zoning got updated, but it diffused that kind of reinvestment so much that we didn't actually achieve our goals the same way that we wanted to. So the goal of kind of being more specific, I don't, I'll kind of defer to others on, on some, a lot of the other decisions and discussions that went into that is, is to try to balance that, that, that too-general, too-specific. And it might be that there needs to be for, for on the Route 40 corridor, where you have the suburban commercial land use and you have the, the mixed use centers. Maybe that is a little bit more in flux. Maybe there needs to be kind of a layering map for, it could say, it could go either way. But we want to make sure that we're not going too general so that we, we aren't going to achieve those, the specific activity centers where you're getting sufficient concentrations of the land uses so that we actually achieve the goals of the character areas. And that, and that is the balancing act. So that, that, I just want to say, I'm, I'm understanding the concern and what you're hearing. And I think there might be, need to be some internal discussion about, of how we, how we bridge that gap and if we've gone too far. Yeah.
All right. I mean, kind of following up on, on, it's a similar issue, but down at about 32 and Broken Land, which I think is an industrial mixed use activity center on the map. Okay, I have a, I have like the dark, dark mode on my laptop, so all the colors are always wrong. So, thank you. Could you walk me through just sort of how you would envision sort of the industrial areas transforming, but then still retaining the purpose of industrial? Because we have some shortages of industrial land. This particular industrial area is kind of in the middle of, it's, it's got residential on all sides of it. And it's currently like a strange transition point between two neighborhoods. But then it's also experienced some of the use changes. Like, there's two breweries over there, there's a distillery over there. And there's a lot of people who would walk between the two. There are no sidewalks, so they are either walking in the street or on the grass. But I guess because this is an area, a village center redevelopment, I can wrap my head around. Especially if there's, you know, limited number of property owners. But when it comes to this area, there are so many different property owners. How, how does that begin to evolve? We sort of set the vision, we say, what's allowed? And then sort of parcel by parcel, they start coming in with their site, their site development plans?
Yeah, so this is, in the same way that all general plans have kind of set a vision and then you update the codes and, and to kind of achieve those visions. The zoning for the light industrial mixed use areas would basically say, these are a different kind of activity center than all the other activity centers, where we're really focusing on industrial light. So these are, these are the industrial uses where they could still be compatible with the uses that are proposed in the character areas and some residential uses. And that the design fabric of those areas is going to have to account for the fact that you do have those industrial uses in there and we want to maintain them. So you're still going to have truck traffic. The style and the form of the buildings might be different. And you're really going to be defining the public realm in this area to, to put in the investment that's needed to accommodate uses that need pedestrian and bikeability. That's actually a major bike corridor right now because it's a way to kind of move through the area without having to go on Broken Land.
And our food bank is located there.
Exactly, so you're, you're trying to accommodate all those uses together, defining the public realm. And then as properties choose to develop, making sure that they develop to match those public realms and bring those in. It is not a wide sweeping process. You're going to have pain points, you're going to have that evolution of design. The key is to make sure the designs are in place to ensure that when things go and if they go, we're being willing to want. And make sure that people understand this is what they're buying into. That the people who want to live in this regenerative area, they're looking for that kind of environment. There's such a wide range in tastes of where people want to live that you're really just kind of making sure there's all these different opportunities for, for people to seek the kind of housing in the area they want. So people who are like, I really want to go to the brewery, I want to go to the brewery every night and I want to walk there safely. And this is the housing I'm. this is the housing I'm looking for, this might be an area that's attractive to them in a way that the other activity centers are not.
Thank you. Because the others, you know, there's a, I feel like there's a lot of, there's a lot to read out there about suburban redevelopment. The Suburban Remix book that Director Gowan had recommended had a lot of examples. But the one that I just still sort of didn't understand, I couldn't quite piece it together, was the industrial aspect. So I appreciate that.
And just so you know, that is my walking commute route for about four years. So I have been that pedestrian in the road. So like, it is an area that's activated, because even when you have employment areas that don't have residential uses, you have pedestrians and bicyclists on those areas trying to get there safely, and you have cars that need to get there in trucks. So it's, when we talk about complete streets, there are a lot of different designs for complete streets that are applicable to these different use areas, and now we're just trying to make sure that the private realm and the other public realm match those, so that we have a cohesive concept moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, I think people would probably be surprised, the number of people who are walking from Hopewell area to work along that industrial, sort of doing your reverse walk commute. But yeah, it's, I'm appreciative that you guys are making sure that it's integrating into the surrounding community. Ms. Young?
the mixed-use activity centers, and the idea that they're somehow going to be more ecologically friendly. I'm, not that, not that the parking lots that are located right now in the retail areas are ecologically friendly, because they clearly are not. But again, looking at the maps of these, the visualization of these areas becoming more intensively used for apartment houses, I think is, there's nothing ecologically friendly about that. And I see that, you know, in a couple of them, there might be a little postage stamp-sized piece of green. But I will say this, that at least at the Kimco Centers, they do have gathering spaces in the middle of the shopping centers. They're not necessarily green. In fact, mostly, it's more concrete and it's fountains. But at least it's a gathering space, whereas I don't see how that statement that's made in this plan can be true.
Sure, yeah, I can speak a little bit more about some of the other ways in which we feel, what are the ecological benefits to redevelopment?
Other than stormwater management, which I do agree with you about, so you don't need to talk about that.
Okay, that was one of them.
Okay? Because, no, I know, because stormwater management at all these commercial centers with impervious surface is extremely bad, and was not well-done when they were built. And I agree that redoing them in some manner should improve that.
Okay, great. So then I was, and then there could be opportunities, you know, to reduce impervious surface if there are these, you know, sort of open space requirements. But what that open space looks like would, of course, to be determined. Would it have a green space? A lot of these hypothetical designs do incorporate some kind of green space. So green space certainly brings some environmental benefits to an area. Also, these areas would be more walkable. So currently, I've seen a lot of people, when you have these big-box retail centers, you park, you drive, you park in front of the door, you go into the store, you go back to your car, and you drive way down the other end of the strip mall to go to the other store. In part, is it because it just doesn't feel very walkable? Now, so the ideas behind this is that hopefully, these centers would be designed in a way, redeveloped in a way that is more walkable, that encourages walkability, that has a public realm, that feels safer. So therefore, that would decrease the amount of vehicle trips driving from store to store. And then through redevelopment, you also have the opportunity to meet green building standards, right? So you can rebuild a place with using more sustainable materials, you know, and other kinds of green building standards.
So we do have two examples, once again, of village center redevelopments. One with only a plan, because the majority of the zoning board voted not to allow it to move forward, the other one of which was actually built. The built one did not redevelop any of the commercial that was existing, except on, you know, one small piece, but the major part of the commercial was not redeveloped at all. And the Hickory Ridge Plan, the majority of what is already there also was not going to spruce up, maybe the outside, but redevelop, no. Green, you know, to the point where you could make it a green building, no. So unless there were regulations that required that they meet a certain standard of green building, I don't think that will happen, because that's, if you don't have to put money into it, I don't think that that, that money will be put into it. So that's just something to, you know, put a pin in for you guys for the future.
May I answer that?
Yep.
Sure. So, policy statement two in the Quality by Design chapter does talk about guiding redevelopment in activity centers. And specifically, one of the, a couple of the actions in that section talk about ensuring redevelopment of suburban shopping centers and office parks reduces impervious surface, increases open space, and provides adequate stormwater management. And then there's also discussion about explore integrating additional environmentally sustainable design standards into future updates of the zoning regulations, site development requirements, and environmental programs to further green initiatives. And then in the text preceding this particular section, we do specifically talk about, the county currently reviews energy and water efficiency requirements in building code every three years. So that certainly is a part of the idea, which also is another recommendation in the Climate Action Plan, that we need to kind of review and evaluate our building code for these green building standards.
And I understand for the new apartment buildings that will probably be built in these parking lots, that could happen. But for the commercial, the existing, and again, I'm talking about the village activity centers. But for the village activity centers, they're not going to replace all that commercial. That's really costly. And they're not going to update, they're not going to update the inside's abilities and put in glass that's useful, that, you know, is more energy efficient, and it's not going to happen. It didn't, you know, that isn't what happened at, what did they say, the past is prelude to the future or something, you know? I mean, you can see it at the Wild Lake Village Center, you know, they did not do that. And it was not, it was not part of the Hickory Ridge Plan either. So this is, I don't know how you, unless this was written into the code, that would not. Then there's one other piece I just want to bring up, that, again, about the village centers, as you can see, I'm very fixated about that. The, there's someplace in here, on one of these pages, where they say that in redevelopment, the dwellings should front the street. Well, I have to say that on that particular idea, I couldn't disagree more. I think that if you are redeveloping a commercial space, the piece that should be closest to the street is the commercial space, so people can see the commercial space and know that this is a place that you can visit and shop, as opposed to having the, and I keep saying apartments, because I will be shocked if any village center redevelopment includes anything other than that. But I can see what, depending on the way that the land is situated, because most of the parking right now is closest to, of these village centers. I'm thinking about Dorsey, I'm thinking about River Hill, King's Contrivance, even Owen Brown, but as we've already discussed, there's what, 14 owners there, Ms. Rigby, I think you said? An amazing number of owners at Owen Brown, this has probably never happened, yeah. But anyway, all of the parking is in the front of these, these village centers, fronting the roads. So it clearly is easiest for the developer to put the apartment buildings on the front, in the parking lot, because they don't have to demolish the commercial or reposition the commercial. So if that, if those dwellings are in the front of the parking lot, you can't see the commercial anymore. And this is problematic. And there's got to be a way to fix that in the code.
Yeah. So when we look at the village center, both within the actual Quality by Design, where it talks about what we're trying to treat in the public realm, and the addition of open space in there, and then the illustrative concepts in the technical appendix, when we're saying housing and retail and commercial spaces should front the roads, we're talking about the internal street network that's being designed in the village center itself, so that once you're in the village center, and you are either driving in, or you're a pedestrian moving through that space, you have a public realm that you're existing in that encourages, you know, window shopping, plazas that are readily accessible. It's basically creating the fabric of that, that community gathering space, and that it should be close together, and that you shouldn't have a massive parking lot separating you from those areas. So that's, that's the configuration. And then when we're talking about the roads that lead you into there, which is, I think, what your concern is, is the view shed from the other transportation network into the village centers and knowing what's there, it's really about ensuring that potentially, we build out the open space to kind of connect from that internal network all the way to that area, so that you have a view shed going in, or you have that invitation of the transportation network into the space. And that gets into building form and design, which will be codified, as we said, through tools like manuals, design guidelines, and pattern books.
Okay, it sounded like you just said that the street should be there to connect. I didn't hear you say, yes, I agree, that the commercial should be facing the road.
No, so you had mentioned that there, when we talk about the village center activity centers, what was discussed was that residential uses need to front the road system.
I understand what you were saying about internal versus external. I've spent a lot of time at village centers.
Yes.
Okay? So, and I actually would disagree with you. I think that the village centers that have created, and most of them have created, these internal areas as well, those areas are extremely well-used. People love them. They're really happy that they exist, and it gives people a place to bring their kids and let them just sort of run free, which is exactly what they do. And I think about the ones that I utilize the most, which is Harper's Choice, Hickory Ridge, Wild Lake. People, and I don't use it much, but at River Hill, there's big chess games set up in those areas. So I, I would disagree with you about that.
So let me clarify. Yes, those are wonderful spaces for the community, and they should be retained, and they should be codified in our design elements. They are also contributing to struggling economic environments for retailers. Unfortunately, in America, we struggle with creating viable retail spaces when those frontages are not visible from the roadway system. So what we want to do is create a space that people do want to exist in, that kids can run free, and that you have those community gathering areas, and design those to also work within slow pedestrian-scaled, complete-street areas in our village centers. And the general plan is not supposed to become so prescriptive that we literally say, this is exactly how we're going to design this village center. This way, it's saying, we need to develop the proper guidelines and manuals that will enable that kind of interplay of all these different uses and the activities that we want to have in those centers.
Well, it's prescriptive enough that it says that the apartment should be, or the apartment should be, the housing should be facing the front. So I, I mean, I, just to, you know, a heads up, I am going to amend this to say, the commercial should be on the street, on these village centers. Because I think that that's the most important thing, is being able to see the commercial in these village centers. If they're going to be redeveloped, then there has to be a commercial front.
I would have to see the actual amendment of the language and see how it achieves the goals that we've outlined for all the different kind of design elements that we're hoping to achieve in our public realm.
It's just, you know, you, I'm just saying, you, we're prescriptive about this. So I want to be prescriptive about it as well.
All right. Mr. Youngman?
Picking up on a conversation we had this morning, when we were talking about, we got in Gateway, and we were also talking about Newtown zoning, and the desire to address this issue that we have, where maybe HRD or some subsidiary, you know, developed this small strip center way back when, and it's now changed hands, and they might want to do something with it. But HRD still controls all these covenants, and they control much of Newtown zoning, and they, and that extends, and that level of control also exists in Gateway. The plan contemplates some changes in that. Has a discussion with HRD occurred yet of whether they would be open to that? Because for 40 years, they haven't been. And I mean, you might be able to talk specific to Gateway, but then it might be a different answer for the rest of Columbia.
What's up, Liz?
No. Funny, man.
We have had discussions with them, and I think, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a process to make sure we're getting to win-win. I think a successful downtown Columbia equals a successful Howard County, a successful Gateway equals a successful Howard County. So there's been some good discussion with them around what they're looking for to see in the Gateway District, to kind of make sure we're making one plus one equal 11, instead of it kind of taking from what's happening. So I think all the discussions have been very productive so far, and we know it's going to be a process, but the dialogue's open, honest, and we have a good, good line with them right now.
And that probably makes sense for Gateway, because whatever the final master plan is, for Gateway, they're going to be a big influencer in. Maybe not quite to the level of the sole master developer, like in downtown Columbia, but look, they and Copt and Nikki are going to end up driving that train. The rest of Columbia.
Yeah. So the very frank answer is that the county government controls land use decisions in the public realm. So we control zoning, code regulations, design. Covenants are a private contract between a landowner and the covenant holder. Restrictions on how covenants are applied and how they're managed, those can be directed by legislative acts that are outside of a general plan and a comp rezoning and regulatory framework. So the answer is sort of, what is the, what is the legal rights for covenant holders to manage the covenant holders as private contracts?
That seems to be the rub when it comes to Newtown and all these things. Because, I mean, there have been small property owners like that that have come to us and want our county council to basically strip them of that deed restriction or land right, which I'm not going to do. But it has sort of outgrown its intended purpose of the orderly development of the suburban parts of Columbia. And, you know, sometimes it works fine still, and sometimes it doesn't. We've seen some issues where it hasn't. So to the extent that the plan, or the general plan, contemplates some change in that scenario or that relationship, it's not necessarily something that everyone has jumped on board with.
Yeah, I think the way I conceive it is, let's make sure what we can control and influence is in place, and that it defines what we want to achieve, and that it's reflective of best practices, market conditions, and the community input that we've received. So we'll take care of what's on our end. But we do not do that in a vacuum. We're aware that covenants do exist, and that's why you do engage your stakeholders. Because where they can still influence things, you know, we still have covenants on residential property, and that also impacts planning and land use decisions and moving forward and alterations. And so it's, it's about continuing to have that community engagement and that dialogue, so that you have both the public realm working together and the private realm adjusting over time as well. In the same way that recently, there was state legislation that said, hey, native plantings are really important, the old model of like, lawn base, that that's not something we want to restrict in covenants anymore. And that was a legislative act that changed the authority of covenants to control that element. And as a result, a lot of the HOAs had to update their guidelines. So that's kind of an example of how those entities can update over time to reflect the values of- entities can update over time to reflect the values of, of their communities as well. And a lot of times, local government is going to be out a little bit further ahead because we have this built-in responsiveness to the public and to kind of trying to catch up with our, our evolving world.
All right, Ms. Walsh?
We're on focus areas appendix C now, right?
Yeah, unless you are finished with that.
Yeah, I went back because I thought it was going to be my last.
Yeah, I'm guessing it is. I'm going to go there because I didn't go there yet. And I'll, I'll just say this. One of the three focus areas in this appendix C doesn't exist right now, right? It's this Gateway, this, this idea of going to new development to Gateway. But in other prior work sessions, we talk about the disconnect between all of the growth targets and all of the economic analysis that are part of this do not include a Gateway. So I will repeat now what I have said before in this prior work sessions. I don't think Gateway, at this stage of the process, should be in here. And for someone who represents an area like Elkridge, which depending on who you ask comprises a seventh, a fifth, a lot, a lot of the people who live here and a lot of where development, new development, greenfields development has occurred in the last two decades, that, that should be a focus area, right? Where's that? That's Route 1 and you have one location in North Route 1. And again, it's across the street from a library and it's where a community has begged for a high school for, I would say, three decades at least, generations of families. So we should not be making more problems in a place like Gateway when we can't address the problems that exist in our communities that are here now and our families that are here now. All of these concepts, especially today, this quality by design is just like the environment one. Of course, every single word in there I totally agree with. You have a giant blockout about cemeteries. That's fantastic, but it's not what happens. It hasn't happened historically. I have unfortunately very little confidence to happen in the future. But this section, and you know, we, we kind of hit the wall in some of the early work sessions when you would put up the picture of Elkridge, this appendix C, right? It doesn't concern Elkridge at all. It doesn't even concern Eloquent City really, except to the extent we may get, you know, west enough to be a rural crossroads. But Gateway in particular, I'm very sorry, EDA and Jason Gianotti, I don't think it's appropriately in here. If we have a concept, if we have a constituent, you know, base that says this is what we want, but I don't think we have residents here who say this is what we want. And the worst part is cynically, to the extent that we do, they say we want Gateway because we don't want all this stuff you keep doing to our existing communities to happen here. If you can export that somewhere else, it's not where I live, fabulous. And that's really an upside-down world to be in, in terms of proactive visionary documents. So I, that, I just want you to know where I'm coming from. This has been consistent. Either include Gateway all the way in this document or take it out. And I assure you, you will see amendments from this district that takes it out, unless I see a lot of substantial amendments that actually identify what the point is and how it interacts with all the rest of this county that's here now and has been here now and suffers from not having all of these things that we describe in pretty little chapters like this one and environment. We don't have walkability in Elkridge. I just saw a constituent email this morning that told our constituent, sorry, that's not us, call the State Highway Department. Like, we, we have to address the needs that we know we have now before we build some new Disneyland that in my view benefits three or five or six primary owners and walk away from historic and existing communities. I mean, that's, that's where I am. I don't see anything, I haven't heard anything, keep skimming ahead for like the magic answer. But this Gateway stuff, I find really inappropriate and incomplete in terms of being part of this visionary document.
So during the planning process, one of the first engagement activities that we did, I believe it was called the Growth Choices Workshop. And in that workshop, we had a good bit of, of engagement. I don't recall the specific numbers of people who gave feedback, but I do believe that there was a specific section dedicated to Gateway, the future of Gateway, because we knew we were targeting that as a potentially very significant redevelopment opportunity and growth opportunity. And we received a lot of feedback, positive feedback from the public saying, yes, that should be the next key opportunity. So that was in part some of what led to a lot of this other work. And then when we realized the significant opportunity of, of redevelopment and growth that could be targeted here, we said, well, this really needs to be taken through a separate master planning process. So the only thing we're doing in this general plan is saying, we need to go through a master planning process to guide the redevelopment of Gateway, given the scale, right? Given the significance. So then, if I could just also talk to then Elkridge a little bit. So we have tried to give that attention. That's why we have that Route 1 plan that we're going to talk about in the first September 6th work session. And then, once we also get into that September 6th work sessions, there are some specific recommendations for how do we go about trying to give additional attention and reinvestment and revitalization opportunities in Elkridge. And that's through pursuing a sustainable communities designation with the State of Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. So that is where you can identify a five-year revitalization plan for that specific targeted area, and then you can apply to the state for additional grant programs in addition to coordinating your own local investment opportunities to try to revitalize that area. So I'm just trying to explain that sometimes the focus area chapter, excuse me, appendix, we tried to use that for more significant kind of areas that might need to be guided by some kind of character-based guidance, but there are very specific recommendations for the Elkridge area.
Okay, yeah. Let me say it one more time and then I'll stop saying it. People will talk about something else. You are not hearing me. What? I have to apply for a Department of Housing grant or something? The one place we do not need more dense, even affordable housing is Elkridge. I, I don't even, I, I guess I didn't understand your answer, but...
Columbia.
What? I, I just, my point is, I, I think your focus should be Elkridge. And I didn't hear, I didn't hear you say back, yes or no it shouldn't. I heard you say, we're going to apply. I don't even know, but that, that is, that is exclusively my point. I, I've seen what you've done on the Route 1. I've seen the South, you know, Historic Elkridge or whatever you're calling it. I, I, all I am saying again is, it's not enough. It is not good enough. This does not address that community in a way that addresses lots of other communities, including ones that don't exist. That, that is my point.
Right. And I'm saying, yes, we do address Elkridge when we get to the Economic Prosperity Chapter, where we specifically say, this is a place in need of revitalization and reinvestment. And how we're going to do that is, we're going to launch into a separate planning process where we're going to try to develop a five-year revitalization strategy for Elkridge. And that is, and there's a specific program with the Department of Housing and Community Development in their Division of Neighborhood Revitalization that has this plan established and in place.
But that to me sounds like you're foisting it on to a federal agency or something.
State.
We're only going to do this if we get a grant or if we do something...
No, no, no. You develop the plan first. You develop the revitalization plan first. So step number one, right? We're going to go...
Do we have that plan?
No, that's a part of an implementation step.
Why don't we, but this is my point, Ms. Kendall. We should have that plan. Like, what are we do, is it a mystery? I mean, was this a surprise?
It is not a mystery. I'm saying it's something that we are going to be embarking upon.
Okay, that's our disconnect, is I'm like, you're 20 years behind. You're 20 years behind. That's my point. And, and I don't, you know, I can't reverse course. And I, that is the point I'm making. Please, please stop talking, we're going to do this. We have, we're going to have a new plan. You've told this community that a thousand times. And once again, that plan or even a discussion of it isn't in one of these three focus areas in appendix C. That's my point. That, that is exclusively my point. I really wish Elkridge was in appendix C.
Elkridge needs more than just a character-based code. And a lot of what is in the focus areas is primarily to give guidance for future character-based codes.
Then make a pretty picture, tree scape fiction. I've been calling this stuff tree scape fiction for six, what is this, 23, let's say eight years. Make a tree scape fiction that looks like Elkridge, that has an Elk, has Green Valley Grocer development, has Elkridge Crossing in it, has Harwood Park in it, has Elms at whatever. But that, you are neglecting this community. And again, appendix C vividly illustrates that to me and to the people who live there.
Well, I certainly look forward to hearing more about our Elkridge, Jessup, Savage, and other Route 1 communities on September 6th. And having been through some of the Sustainable Communities Designation with Savage and Laurel, I greatly appreciate that we will be replicating that process, which has given a lot of benefit to Savage redevelopment as that has been my focus over the past few years. As the person who represents Gateway, I, I'm glad it's in here. I think it's necessary that we have the call-out for what are the priorities? And then that goes to the RFP and the master plan, and then we can begin that discussion. The rest of the county should care and value. In fact, anybody who's advocating for additional revenue to HCPSS should care very deeply about the redevelopment of Gateway, because as it stands now, 40.65% of our general fund comes from property tax and another 20-some comes from income tax. And so I am very grateful that you have called out Gateway, that the point is to do something innovative and different than anything else that we currently have, that we have this opportunity for an innovation district. I think we're all very frustrated by where we showed up on the planet, when we showed up, and what is existing when we arrived. I think, you know, for many of us, there's a lot that if we had magic ones and we could go back 20, 30, 50 years, we would change and we would be able to be in different positions. But the people 50 years ago are in the same positions that we are today, where we're trying to evolve and grow into the future. And we don't know what office will be like. And we don't know what retail would be like, because I'm sure in 1950, the entire concept of Amazon was just completely foreign to people. When it comes... I mean, I, well, Mr. Youngman's not even here, but I guess, he stepped out for a minute. But I just really do want to reiterate the importance of retaining Gateway in the plan, the importance of retaining even certain specific call-outs of Gateway in the plan, like the CSX corridor, which hopefully could be one of our first rail-to-trail, Ale Trail. There's the breweries over there. There's options. But Ale Trail.
I like that.
Right?
I do. I like it. I like it.
There's, there's options. But it, that CSX pathway is specifically pulled out in the, in the general plan, and that provides different opportunities for us in the future, different leverage and tool opportunities that if it were not included in this plan, then the county would not have access to those tools. So this is really more of a conversational response. But that's how, how, I wanted to use my time because I, I do think the future of Gateway is incredibly important, both to me as a resident who lives close enough to bike to it, and me as a representative of that community, and also me as a parent of children in HCPSS and someone who deals with the school budget. So, thank you. All right. We've got until 1:40, but I think you'll probably take us home.
Okay. I do have a couple, well, Gateway, I'm glad we're talking about it. And certainly that needs to be, it needs to be part of the conversation. It would be nice if it was more part of this, but whatever. Okay, I'm not going to. And I'm glad that Mr. Gianotti is here to represent this Gateway, these Gateway interests. And hopefully, much like Ms. Rigby, I am also very excited about this potential greenway and really hope that it can happen, because I think it will be a game changer for portions of Howard County and a connector that we don't have right now. So if there's something we can do to push that forward, which means obviously getting Gateway in place, although I do tend to agree with Ms. Walsh, that if people are excited about Gateway, it's because they're saying to themselves, oh, thank God, all that density won't be in my neighborhood. And that's a big reason why they're excited about Gateway, because it's, hopefully wouldn't be in their neighborhoods, which gets me back to one of my final questions here. And that is, why in this particular, I guess it was in the focus piece specifically, where the technical appendix C focuses on Columbia, Newtown, and Gateway and rural crossroads and specifically talks about aging multifamily housing that should be replaced with mixed housing types, duplex, triplex, and live-work units. And I am wondering, and then parking lot infill development, which of course is only apparently for Columbia, Newtown, since Gateway isn't a part of this and rural crossroads clearly would not be getting parking lot infill. So I'm wondering, why is it that only Columbia has the opportunity to add more density to parking lots? And why is this not something that is going to happen all over the county?
I, I'm not sure I agree with that assessment. The activity centers are spread throughout the county and they're defined as...
This just says parking lot infill. I guess that, that, you're saying that that parking lot infill, those, those words refer just to activity centers?
Can you, can you tell me what specific page you're...
Let's see. Parking lot infill development illustrative concept. That's what it was entitled. Yes. Yep, that's what I'm referring to. And that does not look like an activity center. That just looks like parking lot infill.
Yeah, so it's, it's the distinction that we have between our, our designated activity centers, where we're targeting the majority of the growth in our community. But we also recognize that we don't stop reinvesting in our community just because we've only targeted these, these specific activity centers for growth. Instead, what we're going to see is continued change along our corridors and our commercial spaces and our office spaces. And what this illustrative concept is designed to do is to show how might that occur at a level that does not reach an activity center. It's not one of our, our special designated activity centers, but it still could accommodate investment in different types of housing to meet our housing needs. It could change the way that those parking areas are designed so that they are more friendly to multiple modes of transportation, that they bring different services that office workers or commercial entities want to see in those communities to make them more viable, and that those spaces can adapt to changing economic conditions. So it is a fairly small area, this illustrative concept, and that can be applied throughout the county under similar conditions. And then, as we get into the zoning and the code rewrite and the design manuals, you start codifying that and separating it by character areas and say, okay, is this particular kind of commercial area different than this commercial area because they're in different character areas? Or do they have similar concepts? And what's applicable or not to those?
Okay, so my, my question though was, why only Columbia that has the joy of getting parking lot infill? Why not all of Howard County?
What I'm saying is that there could be infill opportunities throughout the county.
Okay, good.
And then that has been...
Because that's not how this chapter was entitled. It was entitled Columbia Rural Crossroads and something else. So I just want to make sure that when density is created in this document or any of these documents, it isn't all focused in Columbia. We have a lot of density. And if all of these Village Centers were actually redeveloped, we would have more apartments than we would detached or semi-detached homes, which I don't think people ever thought that they were moving into a Columbia that was going to basically be what people in your own document have stated, over-urbanized. They didn't think that this was going to be an area that was going to have these 60% apartments and 40% detached and, and attached housing. That, that wasn't what they thought when they came here. And now, because of the way that our planners have planned here at the DPC for the last 30 years, that is where Columbia is going. And I think the people, the majority of the people in Columbia are saying, give us some breathing room. Let some of this go in other places in Howard County. Don't put all of the density in my backyard, in my parking lots. Put it around the county.
So the Quality by Design chapter and many of the other chapters throughout the general plan are very clear that the policies for contact-sensitive infill design are applicable throughout the county. It's just going to come at different scales to different areas. And that's one of the reasons why most of the growth is focused in a very targeted activity center area that are going to need very defined guidance to ensure that those are done well and that they transition into our... they transition into our established neighborhoods. When you look at the future land use map, the majority of it is established residential neighborhoods that we-
And I'm just saying, I told you what it's been like for the two activity centers, village centers that, you know, this is, it's just more of that going forward. I, it's, it is, it's a lot of pushback. And there aren't stakeholders out there saying, there's some, it's a small group, but the majority of people are on exactly the opposite side. It's a really heavy burden to carry.
I completely understand. The general plan, it is the start of the next 20 years, and then we proceed forward when we get into comprehensive zoning, when we get into the reg updates, when we get into the pattern books, when we get into the design manuals. The planning process continues. The implementation process continues. It is a living process. It is responsive to ongoing input from the community, changes in what's actually happening in the world. And part of what this general plan is saying is, we want to make sure that we're proactive in having those discussions and those hard conversations in the community, having those be set up before a development proposal is on the table. We want it to be very clear and have the community fully engaged in, this is exactly what we think we want this to look like. And then a development that comes forward, you're saying, do you achieve this? Yes or no? Rather than trying under the current model for particularly the village centers of saying, we both want to go through a particular development proposal and create the guidance for that development proposal as part of the same process. We're saying they should be different, that how we design things needs to come first.
I'm saying that if you were to ask the majority of people who live in these villages, do you want one of these, they would say no. They would fight this being in here, period. They would fight village activity centers even being here in this plan. They would say, we've been through that, and you know, because you were at the last meeting when they were talking about it.
No, I do know, but I also, well, I was just going to say, we're over 1:40, so I was trying to wrap it up for Ms. Bella, because I thought that that was a particularly succinct approach about how we're doing this and how the approach is trying to be flipped, so that way it's done on the front end and is proactive and not necessarily responsive, since the world has changed a lot in the last 50 years since Columbia was founded, and-
But the people-
Part of the, that is part of the challenge, but, you know, there's so many things that we're trying to accomplish with this plan. We don't want to become a, the same people don't want us to become a community where only, where we become Chevy Chase.
Wait, can we, but we need a clarification though on this appendix C, because I thought-
Okay.
Appendix C is Gateway, downtown Columbia, and rural crossroads, right? And it has these tree scape fictions in them, including the one I thought that Deb Young just asked about, which is parking lot infill development illustrative concept, TAC 16. I put my little red tab on it. Are you saying this is not appendix C limited to those three types of places? Like, I was like, well, none of this applies to me because I'm not any of these places. Are you saying? I think it's the opposite, which is, it shouldn't, if it's not limited to one of those three things, then it should be elsewhere in the document. And if it is limited to them, then that's not the answer you just gave Councilmember Young. But that, I mean, I interpreted this as, this is illustrative concepts for those three locations, period, because that's all you discuss in appendix C. But that to me is a big clarification point, is this is what we're saying should be done countywide? If it, you know, if it's a lesser status than an activity center, I mean, you just activated. I don't know what else. Maybe it's Golden Triangle now, but-
So-
Finally, Golden Triangle.
So let's go to this-
I mean, that's why we didn't approve stormwater controls, right?
I read this as wherever apartment complex redevelopment is happening, since multifamily exists outside of Newtown, but not very many places. So for example, TAC 9. I didn't read this as exclusive to Newtown. I read this as wherever an apartment complex redevelopment is happening, that's, this is an example of that. And then wherever-
I don't, but I don't, I don't actually, I mean, it's not what you think it means. I need to know from these guys, what is the import of this kind of illustration in this section of this general vision plan document? You know, is it applicable to those three areas alone or more?
Ms. Walsh, I was simply trying to say that we, the three of us have interpreted this differently, and so I'm trying to understand.
That was my question. That's the question I have.
So if you look at the first page of the Technical Appendix C, all right, so these are just illustrative design concepts that are meant to be supplementary to the design-related policies in the Quality by Design chapter, okay? Thank you. First page, second paragraph, all right? So yes, we primarily did, and the reason, and we primarily tried to focus on these specific areas, because these were areas where we heard the greatest amount of concern as it pertains to design-related issues. So people wanted to see more, a clearer sense of what is design, what is character in Columbia? So that is kind of what triggered this focus areas appendix and us trying to dig deeper into that. We wanted to try to provide some examples of what some of these design recommendations could look like on the ground, and we used Columbia here in this focus areas appendix to try to show what some of those examples are. Then we also added Gateway to this focus areas appendix, because that is a very significant redevelopment opportunity, and we wanted to provide some kind of vision, some kind of direction to a master planning process. And then the rural crossroads were incorporated, because that's another area where we saw opportunities for infill, but character was really important when it comes to infill in rural areas. So essentially, the focus areas appendix, yes, we chose three specific geographies to try to demonstrate what some of these character-based recommendations could look like, and that was the reason why we chose those three areas.
And then I just want to build on that.
But wait, no, it's an easy question. Does this stuff apply then countywide, or does it apply to just those three focus areas?
The policies and, so all of the policies and actions that apply countywide are found in the Quality by Design chapter. There are no policies or actions in here. These are just illustrative concepts. These are just to give some people some real stuff to look at when you read all of these words on our pages, when we have the Quality by Design chapter. Quality by Design chapter, policies and actions are what will primarily be used, right, as we move forward into implementation. These will be reference materials, but this is just to help everyone try to visualize what it could look like within these areas.
Okay, so these are the specific examples we're asking for. This is you, right?
These are illustrative concepts.
Providing a specific example of, within those three focus areas, what you've described in the sections of the general plan preceding to the appendices.
I'm not sure we're fully understood.
I thought what you just said, Ms. Kendall, was you picked these three areas to illustrate the concepts that are described elsewhere in this plan.
To illustrate some of, yes, the policies and actions that we describe in the Quality by Design chapter.
Okay, so I mean, I raised the specific example of Green Valley Grocer on Route 1 in Elkridge. It could just easily have been, if appendix C was about Elkridge, a Green Valley Grocer in the, you know, Elkridge Crossing, Montgomery Road, Route 1 intersection, in one of these illustrations, for example, at TAC 16. But because this appendix C only regards those three focus areas, the example in those illustrations is from those three focus areas. I think your answer is, these could apply anywhere, but we are focusing on the focus areas. But this is not, this is not like infill development specific to the three focus areas.
Yes, and then the other community elements, like Elkridge and Savage and other aspects of the community, when we get into the implementation phase of actually creating the regulatory framework and the design guidelines, that's going to get very specific to the needs of those communities. It's not like we're going to take the technical appendix and say, and now these drop in everywhere without any context to where they're dropping into.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for your time today, for everyone. We will join together again on the 26th, and then we have our next public hearing on the 19th. Thank you so much. We are-